Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Regular Meeting this October 21st, 2021. Thank you all for being here. I see that a number of people who are here tonight are probably here for the first time. So, welcome and thank you for being here. I just want to say a couple of things about how we proceed. Normally, we begin with our Pledge of Allegiance, and we make a few announcements regarding our minutes and agenda. And then we proceed right into presentations. Presentations are an opportunity for this commission and our community to collectively to do an honor to an individual, a group, an organization, or an event that is important to this community. So, tonight, we have several such of those, and we're very eager to move ahead and to make those presentations tonight. So, anyway, so, thank you for all being here, and if I could, please ask you all to rise, and so we can collectively do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated.
Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Moritas.
Here.
Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie, not present at the moment. Commissioner Sorensen.
Here.
Mayor Trentalis.
Here, thank you. We have a quorum. The couple of agenda announcements, there's a resolution appointing Robert Biggie Jr. of the Law Firm of Biggie and Rodriguez, PA, as special counsel representing the city of Fort Lauderdale in bankruptcy proceedings filed by Riverfront Cruise and Anticipation Yacht Charters, LLC. And then we also have a revision on M5 memo and agreement were revised to correct the events set up in breakdown day of the week. And M6 resource impact sectional section is revised. So, other than that, any other walk-ons or modifications? There being none, someone like to move to approve the minutes and the agenda?
Mayor, I do have a couple of edits on the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Thank you. I never, I never want to disappoint you. Okay. Thank you. On the meeting minutes of Monday, September 13th, at 5:01 PM, just one quick correction on that. On page, on page nine, third paragraph from the bottom, Mayor Trentalis recognized the director of the Broward County Cultural Division is Philip Dunlap, D-U-N-L-A-P. So, that's one correction.
Maybe I mispronounced it.
No, that's okay.
Philip Dunlap?
I don't know. I don't know. It's not your fault, I'm sure he filled out a card.
Thank you. Sorry, Phil.
Sorry, Phil. And then on the meeting minutes of September 21, the conference meeting, on page nine, fourth paragraph down, it just says the proposed project would have 70% green space, but after 70% in parentheses, it says 78. So, it needs to say 78% green space.
That is correct.
So, that matches the percentage. On page 11, third paragraph down, we need to add something because that's just an incomplete sentence. It doesn't really make a statement at all. So, it needs to say, "Set a deed of restrictive covenants would be recorded, not allowing any building on the 2.63 acres of open space." So, we just need to add the words "would be recorded after restrictive covenants." And that's it for me, and with that, I will move the approval of the minutes.
And the agenda.
And the agenda.
Okay. So, a motion has been made to move the minutes as amended and the agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie, not present. Commissioner Sorensen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas.
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and the minutes as amended and the agenda are now approved. So, now we begin with our presentations, and it's my great honor and privilege to be the first person tonight to make our first presentation. And tonight, we are here to recognize Council General Andreas Segel of the Federal Republic of Germany for the recognizing the 10-year anniversary of our sister-city partnership with the city of Duisburg, Germany. So, Council General, would you please like to come to the front of the podium? Thank you. Thank you. I used to be able to button this.
Too much schnitzel.
Too much schnitzel, yeah.
And you did recently have a birthday.
Yes, exactly. Too much cake. I'll just put the proclamation in front of me, no one will really matter. So, good evening. Thank you for being here tonight, we very much appreciate it. So, I have this proclamation on behalf of the City Commission, which I present from the Office of the Mayor and the city of Fort Lauderdale, presented to the city of Duisburg, Germany for the 10th anniversary as sister cities with Fort Lauderdale. So, whereas the city of Fort Lauderdale encourages and supports the efforts of Greater Fort Lauderdale Sister Cities International to promote the exchange of arts, culture, diplomacy, economic development, education, healthcare, humanitarian aid, athletics, and technology between our sister cities. And whereas the Sister Cities International was founded in 1956, right after World War II, to promote peace around the world, the Fort Lauderdale chapter was created in 1961, but became dormant over a period of years until 1986. Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and Duisburg, Germany solidified their partnership in year 2011. Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and Duisburg now join together to commemorate our 10-year anniversary as sister cities. This visit celebrates our union and serves to strengthen the relationship between our two metropolises that share the mutual desire to exchange information on matters that are vitally important to both cities. Since 2011, the city of Fort Lauderdale has been proud to welcome delegations of visitors from the city of Duisburg, like Fort, just like Fort Lauderdale, Duisburg has much to offer, to include industrial backdrops, a thriving seaport, cultural festivals, thrilling sporting events, leisure parks, and an idyllic waterfront setting. Duisburg is on a river, correct? Yes, the Rhine River, right? Yes. Whereas we celebrate our decade-long sister-city partnership and welcome this year's delegation, Andreas Segel, Council General of Germany, Katarina Nuccia McCormick. Nuccia, are you here? Come on up here. Former president, who was the former president of the Greater Fort Lauderdale Sister Cities International. Jenny and Kevin Selba, are you here in the audience tonight? No, they're not here tonight. Who have been the liaisons for the German-American Friendship Society of the Lower Rhine area for South Florida and board members of the Thomas W. McCormick Scholarship Fund. So, now therefore, we as sister, as, excuse me, as city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale do hereby recognize October 21st, 2021, as 10th anniversary sister-city partnership with Duisburg, Germany, here in the city of Fort Lauderdale. And we celebrate our similarities, our differences, and all the, all both cities have to offer. Dated the 16th day of October, which was the other day, 2021, by myself, Mayor Dean Trentalis. Congratulations, and thank you so much for being here tonight. Do you have a few words you want to share with us?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and dear friends of the sister cities Duisburg and Fort Lauderdale. It's a great pleasure for me to be here with you today and to celebrate this 10th anniversary. And I can tell you, in particular, in times of a pandemic, it's, it's really important to remember that these kinds of partnerships are people-to-people relations. And being an exchange student, or an exchange student myself, it's always good to put yourself in the perspective of someone else who lives on another continent. It helps you understand your own environment better, and it helps you to create contacts and to widen the horizon. So, these partnerships are extremely important in a day, in a, in a world where we see increasing polarization and sort of more extreme views develop on different sides, and compartmentalization. But this, actually, these kinds of exchanges, they help us understand each other better and to cooperate and have a much better common approach to the challenges that we have. As you expressed, there are differences, obviously, between Duisburg and Fort Lauderdale, but there are many things you have in common, like the relationship with water. There's a lot of water around Duisburg as well. You have the canals, you have the Rhine, the Ruhr rivers. You have also sort of the industrial heritage, which is, which is important. You have a number of companies, German companies, who are also here in Fort Lauderdale, just to name a few, Siemens and, and ThyssenKrupp, for example. They are important, important companies. And all this already existing context can be used, I think, after a pandemic, to rethink the partnership also maybe, and to think about new areas of cooperation. If you have, for example, companies on both sides of the Atlantic, you could think about vocational training partnerships, which is an issue which is very much with a lot of experience in Germany. And we have currently partnerships also in the Tampa area already and on the Space Coast. So, that is something maybe could be thought about here. Of course, we have common interest in sports, in culture, and there are many, many events that can be organized together. And of course, you have the Scholarship Fund and the scholarship, the student exchanges, which I think you can also review and see how you can maybe even, even do more or indifferent in various, at various levels. So, this is a very good opportunity to, to really put the world closer together instead of leaving everyone in its, in its own compartment. So, thank you very much for dedicating this session to this partnership.
Thank you. Thank you. I will, I, thank you. I will say that the places you mentioned, we do have better German restaurants than they have. So, but I also want to invite Russ and Mary Ann, if you'd like to come up here, former president, current and former presidents of the sister cities partnership. Thank you so much for being here. Mary Ann, thank you. It's very nice to see you again.
I love what he said about these economic issues.
Yes, that's definitely important. Exactly. So, I have, I have a small gift to give to you tonight, and in addition to this fabulous proclamation, but it's just a token of our appreciation and perhaps a, a remembrance of Fort Lauderdale and Duisburg as sister cities. And I'd also like to invite the rest of the commission, if you'd like to come down, so we can take a picture together. Vice Mayor. So, this is a small token of our appreciation and a, and a, something to represent the event tonight. It's a, it's, if you'll notice, you probably noticed Duisburg somewhere in there, at the top, right? And Fort Lauderdale here at the bottom, commemorating our October 21st, 2021, as our 10th anniversary. I'd like to present this to you. It's very heavy.
Yes, indeed.
Can we take a picture of us?
I'll do that afterwards. So, Mr. Mayor, I brought something for you as well. You know that, already, you know that the German-Floridian and German-US relationship has been marked by bears. You have one heraldic, heraldic.
Bear that greets you when you come in.
Right? Which actually was donated by the citizens of Berlin in gratitude for all the US did for Germany and Berlin, particularly the airlift in 1948, 49, and during the time of the Berlin Wall. So, that is sort of one symbol of the bear. But then you've seen, when I last met you, that we, at the consulate, we have a little mascot, which is dedicated to the Space Coast, is our space bear. Actually, a German astronaut is going to the International Space Station at the end of October, on the 31st. The mission is called Cosmic Kiss. So, that's a nice name for, for an interesting job. But, but we also united, unified Germany, also developed the persona of the bear as a expression of youthfulness, of openness, of curiosity. And that's why I, as a token of our friendship and cooperation, I'd like to give you also one of the bears, which is actually saying, "Thank you very much for your friendship, and this means we will continue to look for new ways of cooperating, and we do care for each other." That's, that's important.
Thank you so much. This is very nice. Great, thank you so much.
And I understand the, the mayor of Duisburg has also done a contribution. Will we, we have an opportunity to listen to that or not?
Is there a video?
Yeah.
There is a video.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Stand by.
You, Council General Segel, Mayor Trentalis, Mrs. McCormick, citizens of Fort Lauderdale, we live in extraordinary times, and because of this, I can unfortunately only address you by video. My name is Zorn Link, and I am the mayor of the city of Duisburg since 2012. Both cities and of course both countries experienced a new and before unknown situation within the last almost two years. I am grateful for the good infrastructure and the good medical supply our both cities could offer to our citizens. Still, we grieve many people who have lost their life in the pandemic. Let us together rejoin and find hope in the existing link between our cities. Duisburg would be very happy to revitalize our partnership in the hope of meeting you personally very soon. Until then, I would like to send you the best wishes from Duisburg and wish you a joyful event today. Duisburg and Fort Lauderdale are not only twinned for already 10 years. These two great and big cities are remarkable and unique. Known as the biggest inland harbor in the world, Duisburg offers excellent opportunities for business development. Water is our element, which contributes to everyday life of our citizens. A long waterfront line of the rivers Ruhr and Rhine, many lakes offer a vast variety of recreational activities. Water is a connecting factor for all cities. Another connection is the university. In a long tradition starting with Gerhard Mercator, Duisburg offers an open-minded space where young people and scientists can explore, research, and invent new technologies, such as nanotechnologies, fuel cell, or hydrogen technology. For our partnership, education plays a huge role, thanks to Mr. and Mrs. Thor and Mrs. McCormick and her foundation. The Thomas McCormick Scholarship Fund made and makes it possible for many young people to experience and live in each of the countries. Long-lasting friendships and sometimes maybe even more are developed by this connection. For the future, I would like to see new fields of exchange and strengthen the existing bonds. My personal experience shows that international friendships and sister cities play an important role for peacekeeping and solidarity, as well for the personal development of the people taking part in these exchanges. For now, I wish you all the best, a great event today, and please stay safe. We are looking forward to meeting our friends again. Have a good day, and as we say in Duisburg with the greeting of the former coal miners, Glückauf.
I guess it's my turn now to go to Duisburg, right? Okay. But their, but their big celebration is Carnaval, and what month is that? February? Yeah. I'll wear my bearskin coat. Anyway, thank you so much for being here tonight. I thank you and your staff and everyone from Sister Cities International and the City Commission. We appreciate everyone taking part in this ceremony tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that was really nice. Um, so, our second presentation, members of the Broward County School Board will recognize our city, the mayor and the city commissioners as honorees of the Florida Department of Education's 2021 Commissioners Business Recognition Award. I would like to invite to the podium our interim superintendent, Dr. Vicki Cartwright, school board chair, Dr. Rosalind Osgood, school board member Sarah Leonardi, school board member Debbie Hickson, and school board member Donna Korn. Are we all here? We are. Great. Why don't you go? Welcome to the City Commission of Fort Lauderdale. Do they allow men? Do they allow men on the school board?
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, we would allow you on the school board, but not in that box coat. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, to Vice Mayor Maritas, to the other commissioners, to this community. Thank you so much for giving us this time, this, tonight. I'm Dr. Rosalind Osgood, Chair of the School Board. I have with me tonight countywide school board member, Ms. Donna Korn. Also countywide school board member, Ms. Deb Hickson. And District 3 School Board Member, Ms. Sarah Leonardi. And we all are school board members that represent the schools in Fort Lauderdale. And we are wearing our masks and keeping them on. We also have, that was a joke, I know you didn't get that. We also have with us our interim superintendent, Dr. Vicki Cartwright. And we're here tonight with some great news. Each year, the school district gets to choose a individual, an organization, and recommend to the Florida Department of Education for the Commissioners Business Recognition Award. And this year, we chose the city of Fort Lauderdale. It has just been an amazing partnership with the city of Fort Lauderdale, from the officers that read in the class, from the investment that the residents made in the leadership of this commission to hire Zoe and have someone specifically focused on education. Zoe does an amazing job in all of our schools, working with us. From how you are allowing our children to be a part of the usage of the bond dollars with working with our schools to create after-school recreational experiences with our students, and times like this Sunday when I call you at 11:00 or 12:00 or 1:00 a.m., the chief of police, the mayor, and you answer your phone. It has just been a tremendous partnership, and we appreciate that tonight. And before we present you with the award, we're going to ask our interim superintendent to give you some comments. And I'm going to ask if you guys make her feel a warm Fort Lauderdale welcome this year.
Well, good evening, everyone. And starting off, I just want to say good evening, Mayor. Also to our city commissioners, as well as to the city staff. Thank you very much for being here this evening and for allowing us this opportunity to speak in front of you today. The Broward County Public Schools is grateful for the incredible relationship and partnership that we have with the city of Fort Lauderdale. Over the last several years, our relationship has extended well beyond just a traditional partnership. It has extended to becoming a successful model of what is possible when local communities and schools work together in order to support students, families, and community members. Some of the notable accomplishments of this partnership include working together to align strategic goals for the city with the district's five-year strategic plan, so that we are all focused together on similar priorities. Other examples are collaborating with the city and the 10 aviation business partners to launch the Atlantic Technical College and High Schools Avionics System Technician Program. This program has exceeded the expected enrollment. Participation in our district's school reopening work group, as well as leveraging city and grant resources to mitigate the impact of schools opening virtually. One example is the city-supervised e-learning program. And, of course, establishing the 100 free little libraries to promote literacy across the entire city. These are just some of the initiatives we have accomplished through our partnership. We would like to especially thank the city's chief education officer, Zoe. Zoe Saunders, she's just been really enthusiastic. She makes sure that the efforts and the supports that we have for our students, schools, and families are there. She really has been the person who has been instrumental in just some of these accomplishments that I've mentioned. So at this time, we are pleased to present the city with this certificate and recognition for being selected as the Broward County Public Schools Honoree for the Florida Department of Education 2021 Commissioners Business Recognition Award. If I may.
We're going to need a gift table back here.
Like a wedding.
That was very nice. Thank you. And Zoe, of course, thank you for making us look good in all the accomplishments that you are, that you do on our behalf. Thank you again. And let us continue.
And Mayor, I just want to also acknowledge just Zoe's hard work and Chris Lagerblum's foresight of hiring a chief education officer. Chris, just great work. And also, Mayor, I know we, we brought up our city's educational advisory board. I think Alan Ziemans, the chair, and we've got a great group that Zoe's awesome working with, so I just want to celebrate those folks.
Our next presentation, I'd like to invite Fire Rescue Chief Rhoda Makeher, who will recognize the Fire Rescue Emergency Management Bureau. Chief, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. Battalion Chief Frazier, Captain Sean Simcox, and Ms. Keisha McIntosh, please step forward here. So as we all know, since 2020, when the first documented COVID-19 cases started, there have been several variants of this virus that have surged throughout our community. During the summer of 2021, the Delta variant stressed the city's infrastructure as it, to the brink, as many employees and family members contracted this contagious virus at unprecedented rates. The Emergency Management Bureau, under Chief Frazier's leadership, acted quickly to get ahead of the curve by developing an alternative for employees interested in getting fast test results. The Emergency Management Bureau reached out to the state and requested the Abbott 15-minute tests. An emergency management and fire rescue then collaborated, and we had an overwhelming success as we created a testing protocol to be used by on-duty members when reporting to shift to provide additional lever of situ, level of situational awareness to all members of fire rescue. It only seemed natural that we extend this type of service to all city employees and their family members once it became available to do so. Over the course of six weeks, Chief Frazier, Captain Simcox, and Ms. Keisha McIntosh provided a mobile testing operation targeting some of the city's most vulnerable departments. Out of a total of 707 tests that were administered, 29% tested positive, or only 4.39%. Then instructed, designated personnel from different departments, we taught them how to continue to successfully test for the COVID-19 after the site was demobilized. And then members that tested positive for COVID-19 were provided additional support on the next steps to take after the diagnosis. And the important part of this is that we were able to identify COVID-positive individuals that may have been asymptomatic and would have gone into the workplace and then continued to spread this disease from one person to the next, and you can imagine one to two and two to four, et cetera, et cetera. So I just wanted to recognize our urgency, emergency management department, and that of Chief Frazier and Captain Simcox and Keisha McIntosh. And if you saw the green truck around, it was outside City Hall for a while, and some of you may have been able to take advantage of that. So I just want to thank them for taking concern and the care of our whole community into consideration, and a great job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Thank you. And now I'd like to invite our, our police chief, Larry Scarrato, who will recognize civilian employee of the month for September 2021. Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commission. Tonight, I'd like to recognize professional of the month for October 2021, police psychologist, Dr. Robert Cipriano. Since 2019, Dr. Robert Cipriano has selflessly served the men and women of the Fort Lauderdale Police Department. Dr. Cipriano utilized his vast experience in police psychology to develop a psychological services program for the Fort Lauderdale Police Department personnel. After the loss of Officer Jennifer Seapot, Dr. Cipriano worked tirelessly coordinating peer support debriefings, as well as supporting Jennifer's mother, sister, and husband during a challenging time. He made himself available to provide support, not only to Officer Seapot's family, but to all of her grieving colleagues. He is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and although it is clearly a personal sacrifice to him and his family, he is always available for our employees and their families. Mental wellness has never been more critical in law enforcement profession than it is today. Dr. Cipriano's contributions to our agency and to police psychology are endless, and his genuine care and concern is evident. He is a valuable asset to the Fort Lauderdale Police Department and is hereby commended for a job well done.
Doctor, do you work on mayors and commissioners too?
Yeah.
Thank you. So that completes our presentations tonight, and thank you all for being here, who have attended and perhaps here for the first time. And so now we'll be able to move forward with our regular agenda. And the, at the beginning of the agenda, I will ask each and every member of this commission if there are any items on the consent agenda items that they would like to pull. If we don't pull the item, that means we vote on them all at once, and, and, and there'll be no further discussion on any of those consent agenda items. If, if an item has not been polled, and you wish to speak on that item, before we vote on that, will be the time that I will invite you to come up and speak on that particular item. So let me first begin by asking each member of the commission if they have any items they'd like to be pulled. If, if your item is pulled, that will be the time in which you'll have the opportunity to speak. If not, you can speak before we vote on the rest of the items. So Vice Mayor Maritas, are there any items you wish to pull from the consent agenda?
No, thank you.
None. Commissioner McKenzie?
I would like to pull CM3.
C?
CM3.
CM?
I guess that's CM321-0934. Is that the same?
Yes.
Okay, CM. CM3.
Yeah.
Commissioner Glassman?
None, thank you.
None, and Commissioner Sorenson?
CR9, please.
CR9. So CM3 and CR9, I have people who have asked to speak on some of the consent agenda items which were not pulled, so I will invite you now to speak on those. CM1, we have Jay Reddy, who asked to speak on CM1. They're appearing virtually. Is Jay Reddy on the line?
Do you not see that name, Mayor?
You don't see that name anywhere?
Last name starts with an R. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly.
It begins, it's J.R.E.D.D.Y.
That name is not online.
Ready? Okay. On, on CR1, Gina Robbins has asked to speak. Is, is Gina on the line? On CR1. Gina, there you are. Can you unmute yourself, Gina?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm with the Chappelle Group, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Say it again?
On behalf of the applicant.
Oh, you're here on behalf of the applicant. Okay.
Yes.
Same with Catherine, same with Catherine, you're both here on behalf of, of the applicant?
Yes, correct.
So you're just here for questions, right?
Yes.
Okay, other than that, you don't, it doesn't matter. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now CR2, Bill Brown. Bill, are you there? Bill Brown.
I don't see him online.
You don't see him online.
It probably meant R2 for Bill Brown.
CR2.
Yeah, it probably meant R2.
Okay, we, we moved him over from attendee to panelist. So Bill is there.
Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yeah. Were you here on, did you want to speak on R2 or CR2?
I believe it's R2. Commissioner Glassman, that's multiple sclerosis walk.
Okay. So we'll come back to you at that time.
Sorry.
No problem. And, and then I have Andrew Schein, who's here for questions only on CR6. And he's appearing virtually. Okay. All right, so let's move on to Commissioner McKenzie, CM3.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I guess Chris, and maybe the police chief, I called you the other day about an item that was taking place at Broward County Commission, item number 57. It was the, the medical examiner's office being built on 23rd Avenue and 19th Street in my district. And in some of the misinformation, I won't say facts, was stated that we would have a...
Substation.
Substation. I think the mayor called you and verified some information, and it was also put on the record by Marsha Ellison that she called you and asked for that information. But in their backup, item 57, had that we were putting a police substation in this building. You assured me that that was not the case. And Commissioner Adele Holness, and both Sheriff Tony, at that meeting, said that we had a substation going at this site. And even the county officials did not have proof of that. And even the county officials did not have proof of that. So I see this item. I don't want anything, any way, shape, or form to associate us with a medical examiner's office or a morgue going in my district that the public doesn't want. So my question to you would be, because the sheriff is having a, a, a crime lab there at some point. So when we authorize these positions, and now we're coming back to vote on them, would these positions go to that spot if that project is approved?
No, no, they will not. The real-time crime center is operated out of the Broward Sheriff's Office Building at the corner of 27th and Broward Boulevard.
Okay, that's where I visited it, and that's what I thought it was. But I don't want anything to come back, you know, and shame us on a project that we have no authority over. It was a county purchased property. It was approved by the county and they were moving forward. We now have the attention of the county commissioners. I got the community to come out. I was there. We spoke against this item, and they're going to reconsider it on November 4th. So if what you're saying is correct, I'll feel okay moving it. If not, I wanted to, to push it after that meeting so that we make sure that we're no, in no way, shape, or form, you know, being included in a project that no one, no one wanted, but Sheriff Tony and Commissioner, Commissioner Holness. And so if you assure me of that, I'll feel comfortable moving the item. Do you guys want to chime in on this? Because I know you, you did inquire, just so that we're clear.
I think I'm, I'm clear.
Okay.
I think Chris made it clear too.
Right. And I can confirm two things. So one, I can confirm that I put our position on the record with the county administrator and deputy county administrator prior to that meeting occurring. And number two, these positions, when hired, will occupy the real-time crime center, which is at Broward Boulevard and 27th Avenue.
And the thing that bothered me the most, not only did that commissioner send out a fact sheet to the, to, to the community, they had it in the backup. They spoke to
The county commission back?
Yes. And it was just, and now they went over every item that was going to be in that building. When it got to that portion, there was no pictures, there was no nothing, but other than the sheriff saying, "I confirm this deal."
Hey, if they want to put a substation in there, they can talk to us about it, but we have nothing confirmed at this point in time.
That's correct. So
So let's move forward on that.
Okay, I'll move it forward.
Okay, so you moved CM3.
Yes, sir.
Right here, second. Second?
Second.
Hey, second. Please call the roll on CM3.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Maritis?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells?
Yes. And CR9 was pulled by Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yep. Thanks, Mayor.
Do you not want to vote on this?
Yeah, so I'd like to recuse myself or abstain from voting due to my wife's employment at the museum.
Someone else like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
And Mayor, if I can just, Alan, am I using the appropriate request and terminology there?
Uh, yes, you are.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Please call the roll.
A resolution in the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a city of Fort Lauderdale fiscal year 2022 non-profit grant participation agreement with Nova Southeastern University Inc. authorizing the execution of the grant participation agreement and providing for severability and an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen, is that's an abstain? Vice Mayor Maritis?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells?
Yes, and CR is approved. Do I hear a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda items?
Some move.
Second.
Removed and seconded? Please call the roll. Sorry, I'm going too fast, Jeff.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yeah, this is like a record-breaking time. What's up with you? You got somewhere to go?
Got wings.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Maritis?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells?
Yes, and the consent agenda items are now approved. So if any of you are here on the consent agenda items, please don't leave. We love you, your presence.
Yeah, right.
I can see that we're not interested in
This Saturday Night Live. Look, look, look at Miller's Run.
We will not forget this.
Is that my tea?
Take names at the door, please. Take names. Okay, moving on to M1.
Put everything on consent.
I'm all choked up. A motion approving an application for a temporary beach license and event agreement, including music exemptions with Project Courage Foundation for the Ruck Run. Anyone have any questions regarding to that?
I have a couple of comments, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead. It's in your district.
It is in my district. Thank you.
Yes, Ruck Run, really?
The Ruck Run. I believe this is the first year for the Ruck Run. I don't remember a Ruck Run
Are you going to run like a ruck?
No, I'm going to let you do that. Okay, so a few questions, Chris. Number one, I'm looking at the application. And so help me understand the free alcohol and the very limited number of bartenders that will be dealing with the free alcohol for the estimated 600 participants.
Yes, do we have anybody here representing the event?
We need more bartenders?
I do not know how to answer that question.
Well, this is in the La Solis Oceanside Park, right? A1A in La Solis. And the application does say free alcohol, no alcohol for sale. And it looks like there's one or two bartenders and Oh, great.
Would you like to volunteer? Wait, wait. Could you introduce yourself, please, and speak into the microphone?
Is that Mr. Carney?
Yes, Mr.
Coach Carney? St. Thomas Coach Carney?
Yes. I think you have to go back to school. You failed some classes senior year.
That was, that was your class, right?
No, you, oh, it could have been.
Oh, keep talking, please. Let us know more. Let us know a lot. Let us know a lot.
I'll volunteer to be a bartender.
They've scuttled that idea.
We, since then, we've made an agreement with the Elbow Room. We're gonna, people can leave the, after they leave the course, they can go into the Elbow Room. And we have a, it's also the 245th birthday of the Marine Corps, and we have a birthday cake for the Marine Corps. So everything will be inside the Elbow Room.
It'll be inside the Elbow Room. Are you still anticipating 600 people?
We don't know. Well, it's, we're probably less than that right now because of
I'm sure they're not going to come all at once.
I, no.
No, no, we don't have a mass start. They can start anytime between 6:30 and 9:30. They just show up.
Another couple of questions that did come up at my pre-agenda district meeting last night. So originally, when folks went to the, the meetings that are typically held for events, originally, this was scheduled for the beach park area, much further south. And then, so some people felt, well, they heard a presentation where this was going to be in the beach park, but now it's moved north to the La Solis Oceanside Park. So any reason why, or is that even kosher to just change the venue, Chris, after it's already gone through its process of meeting with the community and going through those, those pre-meeting meetings?
You know, I guess that would be something that the commission would have to decide. You know, it, it was presented to come forward at this meeting, and that change is notated on the application as I'm, I'm looking at it. So if you all approve the event and that policy, I think it's okay.
Okay. And my last question is, in the application, it says that there are no residences closer than a half a mile, but that's just not true.
No, correct. That, that was based upon using South Beach Park, or South Beach. But we had to move it because they said the Tortuga was moving in. And we didn't have any, there'd be no room for parking.
Okay, this is, right, this is going to be Wednesday, November 10th, correct?
Correct, Wednesday night.
And Tortuga's when? The 12th and 13th or something like that, Chris? Something around there?
Yeah, give me a second. I've got it on my calendar.
They'll be setting it up.
Three days, Friday, Saturday.
No, I know.
I've got it on as 12th, 13th, and 14th.
Okay, so they would definitely be setting up. I got you. Okay, that's great. Thank you for, very much for asking, you know, answering my questions. I appreciate it.
I invite Commissioner McKenzie to run. And he wouldn't have to wear a rucksack because he can carry his own body.
For the record, that was my track coach. He's legendary. He also taught us in football. He's the star of George Smith's career there at St. Thomas. And I just want to recognize that. And he's a, he's a light in me. And I'm going to move the item for you, sir.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for dealing with Commissioner McKenzie in high school.
And do I hear a second?
I can only imagine Commissioner McKenzie in high school.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I hear a seconded? Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Maritis?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells?
Yes, and M1 is approved. M2, motion approving an event agreement and extended hours for road closures behind 10 a.m. on the Barrier Island with National Multiple Sclerosis Society for the Walk MS Fort Lauderdale. I have several people who signed up to speak. I assume it's in support of it. Ashlyn Brown, Bill Brown. Ashlyn Brown again, and Bill Brown again, I assume.
Ashlyn has indicated she desires to speak.
Is this, is this in support of the event, Ashlyn?
Hello, can you hear me?
Ah, yes. How are you? Good evening.
Great, how are you? So I just wanted to clarify that we will not have any road closures for this event.
Okay, that's a big change. So none of those three, from Bayview Drive, George English Park to East Sunrise, from East Sunrise to Bayview Drive, A1A, and then from A1A, from the center of Birch State Park to Vista Mar, all of those will stay open on that Sunday?
Yes, they will stay open, and the participants will be using the crosswalks and will have police at those crosswalks to ensure that they get across safely.
Okay.
That is a big change.
No, that's a big change.
Yeah, that's a big change. So, because Bayview already
That's a good change.
Yes.
Is there anything else you'd like to add, Ashlyn?
Um, that is it.
All right, well, good luck with it, and we appreciate your participating in our meeting tonight. Is Bill Brown on the line? Is there something you would like to add to that, Mr. Brown?
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. No, we'll, we'll, we stand in support of Central Beach Alliance, president of Central Beach Alliance. Last night, the pre-agenda meeting of Commissioner Glassman's, we brought this up on the, on the road closures. Because if you look on the application, it was redlined and changed from the initial application. And we had a lot of concerns about closing those roads down, especially in spring break time in March. But if they're not closing the roads, we stand to support this. Thank you.
Okay, with that being said, do I hear a motion to approve M2?
Some move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Yeah, Mayor, I just have a question about that too?
Yeah, go ahead.
Especially as it relates to Bayview Drive. So if we do have a road that has construction on it and it's already closed on one end, can we just try to be careful when we're planning the events? I know it's March, so hopefully the next sewer project will be complete. Normally, races don't start at George English, do they? They kind of start maybe at Birch or the South Park or Ocean. That's just a tough area right now when we're looking to approve events. And Bayview will continue to be closed for some additional improvements after the sewer project. So it may be good to avoid George English Park and Bayview Drive road closures. Thank you, that's it.
Okay. I guess Bayview just can't catch a break.
It can't catch a break. Yeah, it has three projects in a row, and it's, it's a tough one, so.
All right.
Careful with the word "break."
Yes, no breaks. No, no. No more breaks.
Okay, we voted on M2, correct?
We still need to vote. It was a motion and second.
Second, okay, so let's, please, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Maritis?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells?
Yes, and M2 is approved.
Mayor, sorry, do you know what these are on the, these USB?
We have a court reporter here for one of the items later in the agenda.
Speak, speak into it.
So this, what is it? It's a microphone. Okay, just asking. I've never
In cognito.
These up here before?
dressed up as a USB.
Be careful what you say.
Very nice. Thank you. Pretty
He catches whispers.
Right, little sighs, moans, all right.
Okay. So M3, motion approving a music exemption and related road closure for, for A&R Enterprises of South Florida, Inc. to host a New Year's Eve event at La Solis Oceanside Park as an extension of Friday Night Sound Waves event. Is this going to compete with our, with our dropping our anchor?
I asked that same question. The response I got is the distance between the two and the, and who would attend, likely attend one versus the other. The thought was not, but this is a first-year event. So we won't really know until, until it were to happen, if there's going to be any impact to, to Two Street.
Got it. Or someday we may choose to change the venue.
Could do that as well.
Okay, any questions on M3? I have no one signed up to speak. Please, someone, please move the item.
Moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Maritis?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells?
Yes, and M3 is approved. M4, motion approving an event agreement and related road closures for the 16th Annual Kid Duck Fest Derby. Any questions? No one signed up to speak? Someone like to move the item?
Moved.
It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Maritis?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells?
Yes, and M4 is approved. M5, this is a motion approving an event agreement and music exemption for the Chicken and Beer Food Festival and the Tortuga Afterparty with DJ Silver. I have a question. Does anyone else have a question?
I, I do.
Yep, I do too.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not addressing the Chicken and Beer Food Festival part, but I am addressing the Tortuga Afterparty with DJ Silver. So this was a big topic of conversation with my district pre-agenda meeting last evening. Because if you notice, this event actually comes right on the heels of Tortuga. And not that we don't think Tortuga is wonderful and we're supportive, but it does create a set of issues, traffic, you know, a little bit of congestion, a lot of activity, and I think it's great for the beach. I really do. But then this, this party starts right at the close of Tortuga at 10 p.m. And they're asking for an exception. 10 p.m. is the time limit for music on this part of the beach for a Saturday evening. And they're asking to extend it till 2 a.m. on the upper pool deck, which is outside by the water. And I know that we have a lot of issues with folks with the water and sound and music, and it travels, you know, not to be a killjoy here, but I don't know. I just like to know how everyone feels. The 2 a.m. extension is four hours after the actual allotted time. And I, I just think it's a little bit concerning because you'll really be having just a, a constant day and night of, of activity there where some folks might just find it a little bit overwhelming. I just wanted to see how folks felt.
Well, I, I echo your sentiments. It's great that we have Tortuga on the beach, and I think it's all done within the confines of our, of our timeframes that we have enacted for this community. But I think it's a terrible burden on the rest of the community to have to suffer through loud DJ music, whatever type it is, after 10 o'clock, let alone until 2 a.m. We have a lot of residents who live within 2,000 to 3,000 feet of that area, and that's, and if it's on the second floor, it's going to be, it's going to be even more susceptible to, to the neighbors who live along Idile While, who at the Alignai, La Solis Beach Club, the Venetian. So I really, I really feel that that's a stretch, and I can't support this.
2 a.m. is too late for me.
It's also not an entertainment district.
It's too late.
Yes, I, I agree.
I think it should be dialed back.
I'm for the Chicken and Beer Food Festival. But the afterparty, I just, I mean, I, I think afterparties are great, but they belong indoors.
Is the, is the, is someone here from that, from the DJ Silver?
Is anyone here from the event? Come on up. I'm not against afterparties, I've been to one or two my.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, shout out Robert McKenzie.
What's your name?
Landon, from Behemar.
Oh, your last name's what, McKenzie?
Neil.
I know who that is.
That was your coach in college.
I failed, I failed that too.
Okay.
I did want to talk on the fact that you, we've, we have had issues in the past with our music and parties, because we have started doing those. Um, what we've done is kind of strategically placed our stage placement. It's facing straight out east towards the ocean, and with our new structure on our pool deck, we do have two structures on our north and south side. It is a funnel. Um, I can't say honestly that people won't hear it. We did last year have a test, uh, with the DBA meter, because we did have a complaint, and we did take a DBA tester all the way over to that person's home, and it didn't come up with anything. People will say that here, boom, boom, boom. But it is something that we have asked for, because, uh, the headlining DJ have asked to, to host this at our property.
Can't you have it, isn't there an indoor venue that you can have it at?
There is, but with our entertainment rig on our pool deck, we have, we already have a full entertainment rig on our pool deck, so it's, it's kind of placed there for these type of events. Um.
There are a lot of ballrooms though, right there at the Behemar.
There is, there is. Um, it was, it's, it's another thing is with COVID and everything, we, we try to host a lot, with these parties, we try to do them outside.
Have 20,000 people.
Well, it's, it's with an open-air venue. It's an open-air venue, and that's, that's one of the things that I would, I would like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to have 500, 600 people smashed in a ballroom dancing around after they've been at a festival. Open-air venue, I think, is a little safer. Um.
I, I respect your, your wanting to keep one another safe from COVID. I urge all of your guests to get vaccinated uh, and, uh, or wear masks, but the reality is that we can't have music that late.
Is there, is there a time, I mean, I know it's.
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
So let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
When we left the Air and Sea Show and a couple of other major events, we had publicly on the beach.
Right.
And we were there with the pilots. Um, is that the same DJ setup?
It is.
Um, did we get, did you get complaints that night?
Did we say that one more time?
Did you get complaints that night?
No, sir. And I will say, we have not gotten complaints since we have moved our stage facing the ocean. We used to get a lot of complaints, um, from, I don't know what the neighborhood is called, it's across the water when we're facing south.
Idlewild.
Yes, um, but since, since we have moved our stage right in the middle of our pool facing the ocean, we have not gotten a single complaint. We've had pool parties every Saturday.
And you do the cigar event on Sundays?
Yes, sir.
With the DJ, have, do you have complaints?
No, sir.
So would the music be any different this night than the events you've been having the last several months with no complaints?
No, sir. It's just, it's just with the name DJ, and to go to the 2:00 AM.
So where, where are these, where are these events taking place?
On our pool deck.
Pool deck, but you know the structures they built?
On our pool deck.
They rebuilt it. Remember, we were there for the other events? So it's stuck behind that facing the east, and there's two structures like this.
Yeah, I know.
Where the DJ is, that won't allow the, I'm not going to say it won't allow, but it keeps the music, um, kind of home in, in one direction.
It is funneled, because we have our two structures, it's our new high tide structures, and then we also, on top of that, we have our Behemar, um, tower and the Marina Wing. So it is funneled straight through those buildings.
And that goes till 2:00 AM?
That's what I'm asking for.
And is it still at 500 people?
We had the pilots.
Yes, sir, that's our max capacity.
I'm not advocating either way, but we were there. I mean, those pilots were wound up.
Yes, sir.
Um, I was wound up and.
We had a good time.
We, but what I'm saying is, we didn't get any complaints that night.
No, no.
I remember the DJ.
And that's, and that's, and that's solely because we ha- we have changed our, our direction.
Right.
And we used to have it aimed straight, straight south. And that was when our, our huge problem was, and then we, we all came together kind of as a team and said, where can we put this thing so we, we don't get any complaints anymore?
But these other, these other events that you're talking about, those were also to 2:00 AM?
Uh, no, sir. They haven't been till 2:00 AM. I think the one went till about 12:30, 1:00 o'clock.
Yeah. I left at 1:00.
This, the.
Think they had, they asked you to leave at 1:00 and say.
Plus we were there.
It was over 12.
He wasn't asked, he was thrown out at 1:00.
But the point is, that DJ was, was doing what they do. And no complaints. That, that's a level of comfort for me.
Yes.
Try to do something, um, other than just say no.
But Commissioner, can I just say something? We can't always wait for complaints to guide us on the decisions that we have to make. Because sometimes people are just tired of complaining, because they never feel like they get anywhere with us.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Do you think on this night, one of the biggest concert venues that we have here in Fort Lauderdale?
Uh huh.
If because at 10:00 our noise ordinance shuts down music, that these four, five, or 600 people, he's trying to pull into a private area where it would be police and safe, in my opinion, aren't going to go up and down our beach, you know, parade to do something, already drunk from Tortuga?
Well.
Another activity?
You know what?
Looking for another drink?
I can't control that, but that's.
Driving in a car that says boom, 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 I'm saying.
Yeah.
They, they come here for, for Fort Lauderdale. They come here to, to just dive into what we have to offer as a city.
Right.
I don't think this venue, and, and I'm fine losing a vote, but I just want to speak on behalf of when we invite tourists here to do things. Um, are we just going to say, you know, go over there and, you know, and, you know, cut the ribbon and, and go home?
Well, honestly, there are limits, and, and I don't want to become another Ocean Drive. And I think that we need to set a standard, and I think our standard is, is well reasoned and thought out, and the community has come together, and we've all agreed on these timeframes and these decibel levels, and I think we need to respect them.
But the decimal level has already been tested.
Yes.
And it didn't register at all, and down on South Beach and, and Ocean Walk, you're on a public sidewalk. You go here to this property, you walk hundreds of yards to a structure similar to a parking lot. Then you get between two other structures, and you're going to direct this music one way and try to, you're going to have all 500 of these people on their property, on their property, not on our sidewalk.
It's in the open air.
But everything.
You should have it indoors. I have no problem with that.
But, but we.
They can go, they can go till 5:00 in the morning.
We've had events that are open air.
What's that?
We've had events that are open air.
The point is, it's disrespectful to people that live and, and, uh, visit, who are in the hotels, that don't want to listen to this stuff. You know, we have hotels around that area, is, they're, you know, not just the Behemar, there are other hotels. You think people who come to visit want to listen to music when they, you know, till 2:00 in the morning when they're visiting our city? It's not fair.
Commissioner Glassman, is there, did you get a sense from, um, in, in your discussions with neighbors around what time they might be comfortable with?
Uh, that didn't come up. I, my personal belief, I, I have to agree with the mayor on this also, is that, look, people are going to be on the beach enjoying Tortuga till 10:00 PM. I think these 500 people that want to keep partying till 2:00 AM, go into a ballroom at the Behemar across the street.
Sure.
Go into a ballroom and, and knock yourself out. Like, party forever, DJ, turn it up as loud as you want, McKenzie will be there for sure.
I'm not going to this party.
And then we're just, have a good time.
Tortuga, I'm going home.
But keep it.
Over to El Ballroom with Coach Carney.
I just think this needs to be, after a long concert day on the beach, I think for everyone's benefit, including the people that are participating, put it in a ballroom.
And, and to, and to 10:00 outside, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Put it in, but 10:00 outside won't work, because Tortuga goes till 10:00 across the street.
And the music outside.
Yeah. 10:00, which would be. You got, you got outside music till 10:00 o'clock. You want to keep going till 2:00 AM?
Okay.
Go into a ballroom and go till 5:00 AM, I don't care.
So can we bifurcate this motion then?
So.
Because these are two different events that they're asking.
Yeah, I think it should be bifurcated.
All right, so let's just, you know, vote for, against, you know.
Does it, does it? Can it go on being bifurcated?
Say that one more time.
Can we separate the two and you can still have an event?
The Chicken and Beer Festival has nothing to do.
That doesn't have anything to do.
That's not him.
No, that's not us.
Oh, just, why is it?
Yeah, one's Chicken and Beer, the other was, is the afterparty for Tortuga.
Yeah, Chicken and Beer is in Snyder Park. You okay with that?
No, I, I want to talk about that.
Oh, he wants to talk about Chicken and Beer.
So. Can I, can I ask one more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, the decibel, because I, I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, I think, is it 55 for commercial buildings for the decibel sound?
What is it, Chris?
It varies depending on where you are in the city, but I believe, I believe that's correct.
55?
I believe that's correct.
After 10:00 o'clock.
Believe the entertainment district is higher, this is not an entertainment district.
Right. All right, so do I hear a motion to bifurcate and, uh, and to approve the Chicken and Beer Food Festival agreement?
No, I still want to talk about Chicken and Beer.
Talk about Chicken and Beer.
Yeah, well, let's just bifurcate it.
Want to talk about Chicken and Beer or DJ?
Chicken and Beer.
I want to talk about Chicken and Beer.
I moved to bifurcate the two events.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
So let's move to bifurcate. Uh, let's call the roll on just bifurcating the two.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Does that mean separate?
We're separating, yeah.
I don't know what this group. Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells?
Yes, okay, so now let's take up Chicken and Beer Food Festival Agreement, Commissioner Sorenson.
No, no music.
Let him speak.
Chicken and Beer, I'm asking.
Oh, there's music there.
There's music.
Yeah. So, Chris, what time is, on a Sunday, what time is the amplified music, um, per our ordinance set to end? Because they're asking for a special permission for extension.
Let me just pull it up. I think the answer's 9:00 o'clock, but let me.
I think it's 9:00 o'clock, because they're asking to go till 9:30.
Yeah. Snyder?
In Snyder, yep.
Uh, yes, not allowed after 9:00 o'clock.
After 9:00 o'clock, okay. Is there someone from Chicken and Beer Food Festival here? Yeah, come on, come on up, thanks. If you just introduce yourself, please, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Evie.
Hey, thank you. Um, so, uh, on a, on a Sunday night, work night, school night, is, can you, could you end at 9:00 o'clock? Could that be, all right?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. So if we can just amend that, Chris, to 9:00 o'clock, then, uh, I'm, I'm happy to move it.
That would be your motion.
Yeah, I'm happy to move it.
So you'd like to move the Ch- the Chicken and Beer Festival to, uh, to approve it, but to amend it to?
And the amplified music, uh, at, uh, and the event at 9:00 PM?
Keep the event going, but the music has to end at 9:00.
Right.
Got it.
And if you don't mind, we're going to send DJ Silver over to you. And just keep the party going.
Got it.
Okay.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is, is, is there a reason why you wanted to go to 9:30?
I'm sorry?
Is there a reason why you wanted the music to go to 9:30?
Um, no, that was what the vendors actually were available to, 9:30. Um, they actually asked to 9:00 as well, so I guess that's a sign.
Great, thank you. So that's my motion.
Mayor. Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. So this is a motion to approve the event agreement and, and for the Chicken and Beer Food Festival. It's been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
With the amplified music.
With amplified music being, uh, being allowed until 9:00 PM.
Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells?
Yes, and that motion is now approved. Now the matter regarding the Tortuga Afterparty.
Good luck, great, thank you.
DJ Silver.
Thanks.
Um, someone like to, um, make a motion with regard to that item?
I'll move it.
You moved to approve it?
I moved to approve it.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, there's no second. Um, someone like to make another motion?
I moved to adjourn the commission meeting.
Someone like to, someone like to make a motion?
Well, if we, if there was no second, so then the motion to approve dies, so isn't that the end?
That's the end of it, based on my.
That's the end. We don't need another motion, right?
You don't need another motion.
Exactly.
You're allowed to have another motion, but.
But it dies for lack of a second, and that's the end of it.
And I, and I live with that.
If you want to address it that way, that's fine.
Yeah, I would.
But that's the way it is.
It is the way it is.
Okay.
If you don't want to do it, I mean, just.
All right, M6. Um, motion approving an interim agreement with Hall of Fame Partners LLC pursuant to Florida Statute Section 255.065, parentheses 6. I have one person who signed up to speak, just for questions only. Um, anyone have any questions with regard to this? If there are none, someone like to make a motion?
Interm, um, move to approve.
Motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
Mayor, can we ask questions now, or? I know you said comments.
Yeah, yeah, I was just about to ask if anyone has any questions.
All right.
What do you vote on?
Yeah. Please, go ahead.
Please, all right, thank you. Um, I was just wondering, I know this is just the interim agreement, so this isn't approving the final agreement, but I did see, I guess, the revision we all just got that has a dollar amount associated with it um, as we move forward. So can we just maybe explain that to us?
We can, yeah.
Or Chris?
Yeah, I, I, I can, or Alan can. Um, this is an agreement where there is contemplated that there will be work that would be done between the interim and the comprehensive agreement. Um, if you go to Exhibit 3, I think it is, of the document itself, there's a schedule of projects or a schedule of work that they would like to be able to do um, while this interim agreement is in place prior to a comprehensive agreement. The language reads that if the project should fail or otherwise be canceled at no fault of Hall of Fame Partners, then we as the city are, if you adopt this, um, agreement, are agreeing that we would reimburse for those items that are on that schedule. Um, the maximum exposure is in the $2.4 million range. If we were to cancel it um, between adoption of the interim and adoption of a comprehensive at no fault of theirs.
Do you anticipate any reason why we would cancel this agreement?
Well, if we, if we don't vote on the comprehensive agreement, that would be canceling it, right?
Correct, there's no de facto approval of a comprehensive agreement, simply by not taking action on one.
Right.
That's true.
So, I mean, I know we're not voting on the comprehensive agreement, but there is a, a financial penalty, or I think if that's the word.
It's a risk.
A risk, financial risk of the $2 million to $240,000 now. If we don't vote on the comprehensive agreement, that could be the risk to the city. Uh, but if we do move forward and vote on the comprehensive agreement, this is an unsolicited proposal and, and, you know, I just want to kind of understand a little bit, I know we're not voting on that now, but a little bit, I know we're not voting on that now, but I think this is really the first unsolicited proposal I've seen where the city is a little bit more of a financial partner than some of the normal unsolicited proposals we've had. I know we've discussed this, Stephanie, and it seems like we, uh, if we're partners over the next, is it thirty years, this agreement?
Thirty-one.
That we would, the city would uh possibly, I know the numbers aren't firm yet, but possibly be a financial partner about five million dollars over the life of thirty years?
Yes, Stephanie Toothaker on behalf of Hall of Fame Partners, that's correct. If you vote, first of all, there's a provision in this document that says there is no obligation to vote on a comprehensive agreement, and the financial piece that, that Chris was referring to is only for monies expended by Hall of Fame Partners. So if you vote on the interim, it allows us to do surveying, testing, essentially all, so you're, a- all that is, is a reimbursement. So it's, I guess you could say it's a risk, but it's also money that's being spent on the city's behalf. The total obligation, if, if we get to the comprehensive agreement, of the city is five million dollars.
Okay, um, over, over the thirty year period, so, you know, I know it's an unsolicited proposal, so I don't know if Stephanie, you want to maybe explain, or if um anyone on the commission also maybe wants to just help me understand, what, what do you all feel like is the public? How will the public benefit from this project?
Well, it, this is a replacement of the Swimming Hall of Fame, so the International Swim- Swimming Hall of Fame would be put back in this. It also has public dive pools, it has, it's complete access to the public, it has areas, this is, by the way, this is not a site plan, but there is a conceptual document that is attached to this that talks about what the, what the vision is for the site. This would still have to go through a full site plan process. So all of those aspects obviously would be worked out through the site plan process, it has to go to D R C, Planning and Zoning Board, City Commission, Public Engagement, but it is, it is a public facility, it is a true public facility.
It's attached to this?
I'm sorry?
It's attached to this?
It is, it's attached to this as an exhibit, the original unsolicited proposal is attached as an exhibit.
So.
Agreement.
It's attached to the agreement as an exhibit, that's correct.
So I, I do agree, I mean, the Swimming Hall of, the Aquatic Center, the whole complex is going to be beautiful, and I agree that we need to do something on the east and west end. And um, so I, I don't know if this is exactly it, it does um, it, it does look like it, you know, it meets the need and it provides some additional commercial space too on, on the eastern side, and I don't know, I mean, Steve, this is your district, how do you feel about this project? Do you um, obviously, how do you feel about it?
Well, I, I have heard really overwhelmingly just very positive comments, folks love the conceptual design of it, uh, and as you just said, folks really understand that the conditions of the east and west buildings are really deplorable. Uh, with the forty-seven million dollars that the city is spending, um, the pools and the dive tower and the locker room and the grandstands, this is really a, an additional uh spend that's necessary, this is an additional project that's really necessary. Um, I have the.
Completes the.
Oh, i- it completes, it completes the peninsula, as I think I mentioned earlier in the day today at the afternoon meeting, when I went to the Swimming Hall of Fame induction ceremony uh last weekend and met folks from all across the country involved in swimming and diving, and also from other countries, uh, people are really psyched about this, they, they have seen this, um, they have seen this conceptual design in Swimming World Magazine. Uh, the entire uh aquatic community is, is thrilled, uh, and really very, very psyched about returning to Fort Lauderdale uh and looking to see this project happen, so um, there's definite, you know, there was a tour that day last Saturday, again, everyone toured, uh, real psyched about the whole project, um, so I, 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 I think it's a must. The only uh concern I heard, folks said, well, you know, um, it's really not just fi- five stories because it's, it's more than five stories that typically think people ten feet a story, so, but that's okay. Last night at the um Central Beach Alliance, uh, no, I'm sorry, two nights ago, um, and also expressed last night at the district agenda, uh, district pre-agenda meeting, people said, it's fine, it looks like the west building is about as tall as the dive tower, and that's, that's sort of true, and they were fine with that. And uh, there were some other issues that people just want to see things moving forward and, and maybe some storage issues that will be able to work out, but um, I, I, I have heard an overwhelmingly positive response to just getting this done.
How much did we spend when you said forty-seven million? Did, does that include the locker room that we just added to?
It includes the locker room, includes the, the bleachers, it includes the dive tower, uh, it includes that extra little area above, you know, I guess it was a grandstand viewing area. Because that and the dive tower, I think totaled about eight million if I'm not mistaken.
I think that's right, and I think the locker room is about ten.
Yeah, so then the, the grand total that we have in now as a city is uh the forty-seven million.
And climbing.
Excuse me?
And climbing.
Climbing?
Hopefully.
Seventy meters.
Yes, climbing.
No more climbing.
And this is uh, and this is correct, may I find more along, we're looking at about a ninety million dollar project here for the two buildings?
That's correct.
So.
That's the private investment.
Correct, that's the private investment, so we're gonna have quite a peninsula there.
Let me ask a question.
Wait, put, speaking to your.
Yeah.
Um, I, I know what's, what we're doing here, but I'm looking at these, this proposed east and west piece, but I see these slips where boats are. Who controls that? Is that, is that coming into play?
No.
It's just a picture?
The, 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 the unsolicited proposal is for the east and west buildings.
So why are these boats here?
I think it's just an image.
I mean, it looks nice. Okay.
All right.
I thought we were getting a marina.
You are getting a marina.
No, right here.
Oh, okay.
Okay, any further questions? Everything okay, uh, to your satisfaction?
Yes, I mean, it's just the first time, like I said, I've seen an unsolicited proposal where we, I believe it's the first time, correct me if I'm wrong, where we are a financial partner in addition to giving the land, so I'm just understanding it.
But it all depends on how you structure it, and the next one could be the same way, it depends on what we ask and, and negotiate with the uh.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Proposals, I mean, sometimes we, we, we miss it, sometimes we, I think we're gonna get better as we move forward, uh, based on past performances, so each time we, at least we have a better, um, in my opinion, a better template to gauge the next person by.
Okay, so uh, let's move forward on this, would someone like to move the item?
Some moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded?
Steve have his moment.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells?
Yes, and looking forward to an exciting.
Thank you.
Are you sure we're not getting those slips?
I'll work on it.
But we're gonna have DJ Silver at the opening.
Outside on the twenty.
Outside till two A M on a Tuesday.
Just, just for identification?
After commission.
That was DJ Silver.
Oh.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yes.
Sorry, DJ Silver.
Hey, I'm sure it's great music, but indoors.
But he can do it on my yacht.
Yeah, okay.
There you go.
Okay, on to resolutions, R one, appointment of board and committee members, Mr. Clerk, please.
Mayor, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners for the November second, twenty twenty-one resolution. Some names brought forward, nominations, consensus nomination, Citizens Committee of Recognition, Mary Furtig nominated by Commissioner Sorensen, Michael Albeda nominated by Vice Mayor Glass, by Commissioner Glassman.
Public Art. Already.
The ghost from the past.
Taking it back.
Snooze you loose.
Public Art and Placement Advisory Board, Phoenix.
Let go.
He can't, he can't. Concentrate.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Phoenix Marks nominated by Commissioner Sorensen, Bonnie Clearwater nominated by Commissioner Glassman.
Okay, are there any?
Individual, there's a lot, there's a lot more, individual nominations um to be on the November second meeting, Invest Fort Lauderdale Inc., Board of Trustees Joshua Miller nominated by Vice Mayor Moritas, Aviation Advisory Board Mark Volcheck nominated by Commissioner McKenzie, Citizens Police Review Board Mark Dickerman nominated by Commissioner Glassman, Community Appearance Board Paul Robinson nominated by Vice Mayor Moritas, Marine Advisory Board Robin Chiarelli nominated by Commissioner Glassman. For tonight's resolution, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee William Condon nominated by Commissioner Sorensen, Community Services Board Dana Summerstein nominated by Vice Mayor Moritas, Noise Control Advisory Committee Rocco Ferraro nominated by Vice Mayor Moritas, Georgette Schaefer nominated by Commissioner Sorensen, and Stephen Hudson nominated by Commissioner Sorensen. And that rounds it out for tonight.
Any other names uh to be nominated tonight? Okay, uh, would someone please introduce the resolution for those names that were now read into the record?
Introduced.
A resolution in the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here to and made a part here of. Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas? Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells?
Yes, and those uh board member and committee members are now um part of those committees or boards, and I want to thank you very much for your um commitment to the city, for your devotion and time and sacrifice. Uh, thank you, and, and uh, thank you for helping the city move forward. What are you doing? Okay. We're moving on to, we're moving on to R two, uh, this is R two. So um, this is a quasi judicial resolution regarding a modified site plan as a proposed settlement and a Florida land use and environmentally, our Environmental Dispute Resolution Act process and a site plan level four development permit for a hundred and fifteen multifamily residential units, which include a hundred and sixty-eight hotel rooms as well, thirty-six hundred square feet of restaurant use and thirty-one hundred and fifty-six square feet of retail use, Bay Shore Hotel LLC and thirty-thirty Bay Shore Properties. This is at thirty sixteen and thirty thirty Bay Shore Drive, case number R one eight oh five eight. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. Commissioner will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Vice Mayor, do you have any additional uh representations to, uh, to, uh, to announce?
I don't think so, any additional from, I don't think so. When, when would, when was the last time, I know it was deferred, that we gave our?
June two thousand nineteen.
The last time we gave our disclosures? The last time we met on this? I can go through the ones, how about I do that? Uh, January twenty twenty, Courtney Crush, March of twenty twenty-one, Courtney and property owner, May twenty twenty-one, Courtney Crush and property owner. That's it.
Commissioner McKenzie, do you have any?
Nothing, just.
Nothing additional. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, December fifth, two thousand nineteen, uh, four thirty um P M. Uh, I guess I met with the city attorney, but I don't know if I have to declare that, but I definitely did. I've had numerous site visits, and then also February twentieth, twenty twenty, November sixth, twenty twenty, June tenth, twenty twenty-one, uh, and October fourth, twenty twenty-one with uh the applicant, and I've attended several uh Central Beach Alliance meetings where this was uh presented, including recently on um October nineteenth, Tuesday.
Okay.
That's it.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Multiple meetings with applicant.
Okay, so I have additional um communications, I've met with the applicant, I met with uh the representatives, I took a site visit again, and um, so I guess that's it, so quite a few people have signed up to speak on this. But Alan, before we move forward, could you please explain to the commission what the status of this case is so that we know what posture we are now moving forward?
Sure, um, initially, well, after the denial, uh, back in, what was it, two thousand nineteen, um, a petition for writ of certiorari was filed, which is typical in a development denial, and there's a process, it's, there's acronym for it is FLUIDRA, um, the Florida statute, basically a process, a mediation process, um, dealing with development, and um, we were approached as part of uh, the litigation to stay the petition for writ of certiorari so that the applicant would have an opportunity to uh go through this process and modify it, the project, to see if the commission would be. Do that, as part of the process, we went through a mediation hearing, for the lack of a better term, it's not, uh, we used a special magistrate mediator, which was retired Judge Silverman. And the applicant was able with public input to uh make their presentation. Um, as you saw and you were privy to, the special magistrate did issue and direct us to come to the commission to go ahead and see what your analysis of it would be, whether you would approve it. If, excuse me, if you do approve it, then it would, the project would be approved, moved forward, and that would end the FLUIDRA process, and it would also end the um, the litigation. If you do not approve it, then they, we would go back to the special magistrate, he would uh issue, it's not really a ruling, but a decision with regards to how he felt whether we initially, whether we uh actually uh interfered with their property rights. Um, that is non-binding, so we don't have to follow it, we would come back to the commission to see if you had any inclination to approve it again at that time after the mediator issues a formal opinion. If not, it just goes back to court, so in short, tonight you can approve it modified, uh, or if you deny it, it will just essentially go back to court.
Okay, so uh, this is basically, um, it's basically in court, on appeal, um, mediation. My understanding is that there have been some modifications to the site plan from when it was originally proposed, so uh, Courtney, if you'd like to uh give you the opportunity to explain to the commission any of the changes that have been made, so, um, or, or do you just want me to go forward with public comment? I can't hear, what'd you're saying?
Then I will walk up to the microphone, Courtney Crush, um, on behalf of the Bay Shore Hotel LLC. I would be happy to take the commission through the changes if that's your pleasure.
Yeah, why don't you tell us what changes have been made, um, so that the public and the commission are clear as to what they'd be voting on tonight? That would be very helpful.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners, uh, Courtney Crush, uh, with me this evening is Pavel Plata, property owner, Lauren Mamos with Crush Law, my co-count, my co-counsel Ian DeMello, who's handling the litigation and the FLUIDRA matter. Also here and available for questions is Paul Weinberg and Abby Sutton with Kison Associates, who are landscape architects, civil engineers, and traffic engineers, uh, together with Pramad Chuhadri, and of course, our architect, uh, sorry, Ronaldo Borges with Garcia Str- uh, excuse me, wrong firm, Borges and Associates. Um, I'm gonna share with the commission um the proposed changes that were made um and discussed at the mediation, as I think the commission may be aware, uh, as part of the FLUIDRA process, um, and as Alan described it, um, the mediation invitations were um sent out uh by the city to anyone who had participated in the site plan process at the public hearings, P N Z or commission, as well as abutting property owners, and a good bit of our neighbors were able to participate. Uh, the property with which you may recall from Ja- uh, June of two thousand nineteen, uh, is at the southeast corner of Birch Road and Bay Shore Drive, uh, to the south across Bay Shore from the W Hotel and to the north of Birchcrest condominiums. Uh, what we did as part of the year-long exercise in making some proposals was to review carefully the comments made by you as commissioners at the June twenty nineteen hearing, and also the community feedback at multiple public outreach uh events, including the Central Beach Alliance meeting, Planning and Zoning Board meeting, individual meetings with Birchcrest, um, and, and also Spring Tides Board, and thought that we would be best served by taking some of the missing information that we heard and reread in your transcripts and going a step beyond that which we were able to provide at the June twenty nineteen hearing. Um, as uh, as was mentioned, we did present those proposed changes uh both to the city uh and with the special magistrate at the mediation who issued the report um that I believe is part of your backup with the strong encouragement based on uh him digesting the proposals as well as the public input and city's um participation and analysis of the proposals um that we come before you all. As I said, we listened and read very carefully. Infrastructure is something that had been mentioned uh in conjunction with not just the Bay Shore Hotel, but with many um proposed developments, in particular um on Fort Lauderdale Beach. Um, as you may recall, as part of the proposal, there were options presented with respect to sewer connectivity. Um, I think that was in the backup for you in tw- two thousand nineteen. Pavel had indicated a commitment to connect to a future lift station down south, so as part of the mediation and the proposal, we emphasized that the commitment is not an option. Pavel commits to um upsize from ten inches to fifteen inches, seventeen hundred, uh, excuse me, twenty-six hundred linear feet um of sewer line to connect down to the lift station, which is now more of a certainty being constructed um as part of the marina. So that, that information, and I also want to emphasize that the water and sewer capacity analysis was updated as of September twenty twenty-one, um, with the specific requirements from the eight inch gravity sewer going to a ten, and then the ten going to a fifteen. The other thing that we heard um from this commission loud and clear during the hearing was traffic. Traffic, uh, a, a traffic study was not required. The hotel and residences do not generate sufficient trips um to warrant a traffic study, and you may recall at the time, we had uh looked at per the direction of the city under Benjamin Mestreppo. Also, um, double counting, if you will, the restaurant, which is part of the hotel, and it still didn't reach that thousand trips. That being said, um, we heard the commission, and so Pavel commissioned the traffic engineer Keith and Associates to conduct a traffic study um at the intersections, and the results of the traffic study were provided to the city. As you can see, and you may have seen in more detail in your backup, uh, the impacts or the future with the proposed Bay Shore Hotel. Most of the intersections uh that are at A and B remain at A and B, and um, there is an intersection at C, and that intersection is not um changed to a different level of service grade as a result of the proposed Bay Shore Hotel. As a footnote, the background traffic you see in the center column, which says future without project, um, what we added in to be, again, very respectful and conservative, was is the approved Beach Boys Plaza Hotel and the approved currently, uh, Bahia Mar um project. EMS, um, this was something that not only you, Mayor, Commissioner Glassman, Commissioner Sorensen men- um, mentioned at the June nineteen hearing, but also something that our neighbors um really, really had a concern about at the hearing. And at that time, uh, the commission did not have uh EMS data. So what you see on the screen here is the um section, uh, thirteen A or district, if you will, which is served by the fire station thirteen, um, currently on uh Sunrise Boulevard near Birch. which is served by the fire station 13, currently on Sunrise Boulevard near Birch State Park. What is highlighted is the progression or response times for District 13A. And up top, what is highlighted is the department-wide overall response times. And I think what you can see is that the, that 13A actually has a better-than-citywide response time. And also, it appears that the fire station is doing a phenomenal job, and that response times seem to be decreasing. Setbacks, a part of the discussion that had to do with the design of the building. My impression, the commission, from its comments, appreciated many of the components of the design. This is not a tower that on this 400-foot-long east-to-west property proposed to put its tower on the eastern 200 feet. It located the tower as far west as possible, and the 86-foot-by-186-foot tower is very far westward. That was done as a result of comments from our neighbors with respect to northern-facing units and views. At the time, the Bay Shore Hotel had generous setbacks. There was a discussion, and again, concern and raised by those who participated from the Central Beach neighborhood, that still setbacks were a concern. The height, as you may recall, in the ABA zoning district is 200 feet tall. Bay Shore Hotel was proposed at the time at 190 feet. But with respect to setbacks, because that's where the real redesign work occurred, was at the site plan level. Pavel asked his team to see if the setback from, at the, at the south, so our rear yard setback, which at the time was at the tower level, tower-to-tower separation was 101 feet. As I mentioned, the tower itself is 85 feet deep, and 134 feet to the W Hotel, which of course is across the Bay Shore right-of-way. Could that be moved even further? The site design and analysis of landscaping and drainage, public and private realm improvements, said that yes. So we presented at the mediation, this movement where now the tower-to-tower, the tower separation from our neighbors to the south at Birchcrest is 115 feet four inches, bringing us 120 feet across the right-of-way from the W Hotel. This shares you that, we think, very respectful separation. At the same time, there were architectural elements on the proposed hotel and occupied space. There was an enclosed amenity room up there that seemed to be viewed as additional height. And again, while well with under the ABA zoning district height, similarly to our care of tower orientation, we have addressed that by removing the architectural band and unoccupying that space. So now an elevator may go to the pool deck, and you can see the difference in perspective right there. You'll note from this side that as a result of this change, which really did require redesign of the civil engineering systems, the sidewalks, the ADA accessible ramps, and drainage. And I mentioned drainage because, as you'll see shortly, this proposal has a building footprint that takes about 42% of the property. The remainder of the property at the ground level is publicly accessible. So redesigning that in, at a different location was something that was both worthwhile, successfully achieved, but did take some study. As a result of the shift, we are now actually at the ground level, slightly closer to our neighbor to the north, the W Hotel, than we are to our neighbor to the south. As we were doing it, we were trying very carefully to look at the context of other proposed buildings in our beach area, specifically the ABA and the IOA, and noted that we believe with this effort, we are now probably cited the most respectfully of any adjacent property owner, unless that adjacent property owner is separated by a right-of-way from its neighbor. This shares with you the effect of how we achieve this. We not only moved the podium to the north, we also moved the tower further north on the podium. So the result gets you from that 101 feet to the 115 feet four inches. As I mentioned, the site plan, I believe you can see the dark property line, which goes around the property on the inside of the sidewalk on Bay Shore Drive, and also on Birch. We were able to maintain, and this is the revised, we were able to maintain the ground-level amenities and features that at the commission meeting in 2019 seemed to be important to the commission. Are you creating the public realm? Certainly, the beach design guidelines, the private sector design guidelines strongly encourage private property owners and development proposals to enhance the public realm, which here we are doing for the 400 feet along Bay Shore, and also hopefully one of the first improvements along Birch with shade trees. The move to the north also allowed us to provide a greater landscape buffer, as you can see on the south, to our neighbors. I'm going to walk you around the site briefly to share with you the revised, both the proposed at the time, and then the revised amenities, so that the commission can see that these landscape and hardscape improvements were able to still keep the same wide sidewalks, this is Bay Shore Drive right here, shade trees, vehicular access, and then public access to the ground-level amenities, lobby entrance to the hotel, market, which is on the northwest corner of the property. That was all able to be maintained. And then I just wanted to share with you the perspective of the Bay Shore, which is obviously centered on the property. Emphasize that the design components that we believe that were well-received at the time in city staff's review, by some of the commission comments with respect to keeping a podium very low. It is proposed with the double height of walkable retail that you see right here, and above that, two levels of parking for a total height of 44 feet. The tower oriented 168 feet back from our eastern property line. And now this is the tower located as adjusted, and we believe is designed and located in a very appropriate manner with respect to its neighbors at the W, Birchcrest, Spring Tide, and also the West End to the East. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, as is our team.
Okay, I would recommend that the commission wait for their questions until after we've had public comment, if that's okay. And there are a number of people who have signed up to speak, so I'm going to call three in a row. So please be prepared to, to participate. I would ask that you keep your comments to two minutes each, because we have quite a few people who've signed up to speak. And except, I will give the, the neighborhood representations of five minutes. And the first person I will invite to speak is Bill Brown from the Central Beach Alliance. He will be appearing virtually. Bill, are you on the line?
Mayor, this one's quasi. So would it be if the attorney allows, and you allow, would it be a good idea just to do a swear-in for everybody virtual?
Yes, we can, and you opened the public hearing, so you might as well.
All right, so how do, how do we do that?
I guess we could just ask-
Everybody who's appearing virtually, if you can hear me, please raise your right hand.
And anyone in the audience that did not get sworn in also, this would be a good time for you as well, if you raise your right hand as well.
Okay, so please administer the oath.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you were about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, I didn't go through the site plan after public comment. If you have questions, or if I feel it might be appropriate, I can certainly do that.
Okay, very good, that's fair. Okay, Mr. Brown, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. William Brown, president of Central Beach Alliance. First, let me begin by thanking you for having this item deferred from the last commission meeting to give the neighborhood time to hear it again. We were kind of caught off guard, that it was coming back before the commission. But we did hear the meeting on Tuesday night. After the presentation, the board of directors felt that it was inappropriate for us to take another vote, because we were on record at the special magistrate's hearing, opposing the, the initial project back in January of 2019, where the vote was 28 for the project and 202 against. So we, that is still our current position, and with that, I will give my time back in respect to the commission, so that you can hear from the residents and other members of the Central Beach Alliance. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brown, did the Central Beach Alliance take a second vote on this?
No, we did not, because we have never done a second vote on a project.
All right, so what was your first vote?
The first vote was 28 in favor, 202 against.
Now, is there a reason why you didn't take a second vote? Because it seems like the site plan changed and the building changed a little bit. Is there some reason why you didn't review the, the modified version?
Yes, that, we, it appeared that there was not enough significant change in the site plan to justify changing our position.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Brown. Following, we have Ms. Monica Caporale, we have Ilona Vitalis, and we have David Frazier, all who are appearing in person. Is, is Ms. Monica Caporale here? Am I pronouncing all of that correct? Okay. Followed by Ilona- If two minutes, followed by Ilona Vitalis, followed by David Frazier.
Good evening, I'm Ms. Monica Caporale. I'm originally from Connecticut and moved to Central Beach area. I'm on the corner of North Birch and Bay Shore, right across the street where the proposed plan is set to-
Please speak into the microphone.
-hopefully set to go. I'm in 100%, I, I love the idea. I think the team made such an effort, two, three times, to come into this, and I think it will give a little pop to that area. That corner is very dry. I'm a comedian from up north, so I could, I would love to see something a little bit more alive. Of course, no disrespect to the Elba Room corner. We need a little bit more fun, little something, but nothing crazy and to disrupt the neighbors. So I'm in favor of it, and-
Okay, we got DJ Silva.
Thank you for here with me.
Thank you. Ilona Vitalis, followed by David Frazier, followed by Pramad Chudhuri.
Good evening, I'm Ilona, I'm from the Netherlands. I moved here 30 years ago, and I am working currently for the tourism industry. From my personal experience, tourists that aim to spend their vacation in the city of Miami are changing their plans after staying a couple of days in Miami. They decide to come to Fort Lauderdale instead because of what Fort Lauderdale city offers in attraction, excitement, and because of the safety. They don't feel as safe as in Miami as in Fort Lauderdale. Therefore, the demand for hotel rooms in Fort Lauderdale is climbing at a rate of 5% annually. Since, since 2017, hotel demand has been outpacing the supply. Fort Lauderdale's hospitality marking, market is thriving. Fort Lauderdale Beach is the main tourist attraction in our city, and that's why we should constantly work on the beautification and enhancement of the surrounding area. We need projects, as the Bay Shore Hotel, to transform our site, and I urge you to approve this project. This project will also create employment opportunities for so many people who lost their hospitality jobs during COVID-19. It will bring hope. I have found that I'm paying more taxes than in previous years, and of course, nobody likes to pay taxes. But I also understand that these taxes go towards the upkeep of our city. Doesn't a project like the one on the agenda increase the revenue for our town from collected taxes? I look forward to seeing this project approved and completed in my neighborhood, so we all can benefit from it. This plan will enhance and improve our neighborhood.
Great, thank you so much. David Frazier, followed by Pramad Chudhuri, followed by Andrea Calavi. Are you David?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name's David Frazier. I've been a resident and have worked here in Fort Lauderdale for approximately the last 20 years. I've, know that neighborhood, live very close to it, but not in it. I've seen changes along the beach in Fort Lauderdale in the last 20 years. I support this project. I think it will add a significant source of revenue to the city, allow more tourism to come to the city. And what I do in this city is I am the managing broker for a yacht brokerage firm. And we all know the importance of the boat show coming up. And always at this time of the year, well, it's a little different with COVID, but there was always a scramble for hotel space for people that would come from points throughout the world. So we need the hotel space, and I know the part of it is also residential. And looking at the changes that Mr. Plata and his team have made, they certainly tried to address all the concerns that were brought up in the previous meeting, I guess in 2019. So thank you, and I do support this.
Thank you, sir. Pramad Chudhuri, followed by, she's, Pramad is virtual, see-
Mayor?
Yeah.
He's on our team, he's our traffic engineer.
Oh, okay, okay. Andrea Calavi, followed by Adrian Dunn, followed by George Colony. George? Are you Andrea?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Andrea Calavie, I am working here, I'm a resident of Central Beach. I really believe in this project, from what I studied about it, and I think it will bring a lot of benefits to our neighborhood. It's a high-quality project, starting from the architecture, the facilities, as well as the vegetation, that I think is very important, because as said before, we need something more alive and more, more than the concrete that we see all the time everywhere. I sustain this.
Okay, thank you so much. Adrian Dunn, followed by George Colony, followed by Bob Toxen.
Yes, my name is Adrian Dunn. First, I just want to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity, and giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf. I'm from Louisiana, I've been here through several years, just got back. But I've been staying on the, on the property of the Gisella Collection for about a year and a half now. And I think this project would be a great idea, because it enhances, you know, it enhances what this Fort Lauderdale looks like on the beach. And I just think that it would be a good idea to approve it. About the Bay Shore project, I've had a chance to see the designs, as we probably all have by now. And this project brings about a secure, upscale, and well-illuminated corner on Birch and Bay Shore. It will also enhance what is a very unpleasant situation right now with the, with the, with parking spaces. So with this facility, having a garage, then it will also enhance that. I will provide, it also will provide an amazingly beautiful landscape and a much-needed shade for beach users and pedestrians, as you can see the landscape along that way. And I will be delighted to see Bay Shore project approved tonight. I think it will really beautify this community.
Okay, great, thank you. It was suggested that as- Okay, great, thank you. It was suggested that, as I call the names, if those folks could sort of line up behind the podium so that they're ready to speak right after the speaker concludes their remarks. So George Colony, followed by Robert Toxen, followed by Carol Callahan, who is virtual.
Hi, my name is George Colony. Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I got to tell you something. I'm coming to more meetings, because you guys are funny. This has been entertaining for a couple hours, so I'm coming every night from now on. And I'd like to address our friends in Fort Lauderdale. We all care about Fort Lauderdale, and the job that you guys have done, especially in Holiday Park, is amazing, how you've changed all of the areas around Holiday Park, including Victoria Park. As far as this project, I want to take a different approach, because back about eight years ago, I met the family who came in from Poland that wanted to invest in Fort Lauderdale. They were looking for hotels, and as Commissioner Glassman says, they found four of them, and they're all deplorable when they came here. They're kind of a victim of their own success, because they spent millions of dollars to conform, to change these properties into kind of first-class properties for people on a different level. They couldn't compete with the Four Seasons and with a W Hotel, but they could compete for an alternative for people that wanted to come here and enjoy at a lower price. So they became a victim of turning those properties. The last time I was here, I heard all of the people next in the neighborhood saying, what a nice job. They like the, they like what they did. They like this kind of a low-rise project for people. Unfortunately, it's not profitable, and they can't continue to do this. So even though they've spent millions of dollars to improve the property, they now have to take another course from a business standpoint, and you all understand it. Commissioner Glassman, I know you understand it. Mayor, I know you understand it. I know you all understand it. So I would like to see this approved. We need more rooms. We are, as you know, in the residential market right now. We're struggling to find places for the hundreds of people that are coming here every month and looking, and we're going to run into the same problem with hotels, because you're increasing the convention center, there's more people coming here, people from the north are just moving down here in droves, and we really need a project like this, and I think it really improves that block. Thank you, guys, for your time. I'll see you tomorrow night.
Thank you. Bob, followed by Carol Callahan, followed by Bill Brown again. Bill, you're everywhere.
Greetings to the mayor, to the vice mayor, to commissioners. I live at Spring Tide, which is directly east of where this project is planned. I urge you to vote against this Bay Shore Drive Hotel project. It would be a disaster for everybody in the neighborhood. It would completely block our view to the west of the city, the sunsets. I'm told that that shouldn't be a consideration, but I guess we could also say, you know, living by the beach isn't a consideration, but most people would disagree. This would, basically, infrastructure can't take this. As was mentioned earlier this evening, there's currently a project on Bay Shore for sewer failures. This hotel would be an overload. They don't even have a real plan for solving it. They're saying, well, maybe if we build a new pumping station, they might be able to tie into it. That's, it may not work. The failed roads that would be involved, the excess development, the traffic, as it is, traffic congestion already is intolerable in the weekends. This will make it worse. There's very few available public parking spaces that aren't taken. That would get worse. The amount of parking allowed is inadequate. The construction noise, the smell, the debris, the dust, this two or three years of construction would be a nightmare for everybody living around. And ongoing, it's too much traffic. It's too bad that Mr., that the fellow from Poland made a bad business investment, but I'm not willing, and all the people I've talked to in Spring Tide, Margaret at Shore Club, others at Birch Towers, I just can't fathom why we should have our quality of life destroyed just for somebody to make money. If there are hotel space that needs to be built, it should be built somewhere where there's compatible land use. Please, please vote this down. I note that Commissioner McKenzie said that people in his district were against that, I believe it was a substation. Similarly-
I'm sorry, let me just correct you real quick. They wanted to put a morgue, a medical examiner's office in the neighborhood.
I stand corrected.
I would welcome a hotel each and every time.
All right, there's where, I think we found a new home for the hotel. Let's go build it in his, in Congressman McKenzie's district. Thank you very much.
Congressman.
You gotta vote.
Congressman. President McKenzie.
Here, here.
President McKenzie.
Do you have an announcement to make tonight?
Wow. It's exciting.
He's been holding back on us. Thank you, sir. Can I ask you a question, sir? Can you go back to the podium? Just a quick question. You live in Spring Tide. Do you, now, tell me, how do those apartments work? Do you face just one side of the, of the building, like the north, the east, the south, or the west, or does, are your units, like, pass through apartments?
Some of each. My dear friend who owns one of the units, 501, she has a view pretty much from the, from the northeast to the west. She sends me pictures almost every day of the sunsets over the city.
Right.
My unit 207, I'm very blessed. I have views both of the beach and, and west to the city and so forth. So some of each, I've talked to quite a few people in the building. Everybody's dead set against this. And by the way, I also talked to our board members. Despite what Ms. Crush said, everyone says, nobody's heard from her recently. So I really questioned that. I honestly questioned the city doing business with somebody that sees it. I don't do business with people that sue me.
Okay, just, okay, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Carol Callahan, are you on the line? Carol, can you hear us? We can't hear you. Carol?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Good evening. How are you?
I am well, and I'm very happy to say that due to our EMS and that fantastic response is why I am here to speak today. And I've known Commissioner Glassman for a number of years since I joined and took the Neighborhood Association meeting. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mr. Mayor, and Congress, Congressional Leader. I'm vehemently opposed to this project. I think that all of the points that we raised opposing this plan still exist. The modifications that have been made certainly do show improvements. I don't know if all of the models in the illustrations are to scale, but I still believe that there still needs to be a much greater modification of the project. It just seems to me that we're not fulfilling the zoning, even though we're enhancing the public realm. There is legitimacy in that it's meeting the zoning regulations, but you're putting a restaurant in this building, you're putting the hotel in the building. If this building was just purely a residence, that would change things considerably. There's going to be delivery services, there's going to be noise, particularly impacting the north residents of Birch Crest and those of Spring Tide and that of the Westin Hotel. And it, to me, it just doesn't fit. It's not beachfront. It's not on the beach. We're a block back of the beach, and it should be much more residential.
All right, your two minutes are up, ma'am.
Mayor, can I ask a couple of questions for Mayor? Can I ask a couple of questions just on, what was her name, Carol? Carol?
Yes.
Yeah, Carol, this is Ben. Tell me, so is it your view that there should not be a hotel there on site? I'm trying to understand what, what could be improved to the, to the site plan?
The hotel is going to bring in a lot of traffic deliveries, Ben. If you look at the Westin, and I live, you know, close enough to see the Westin and hear the Westin, the delivery trucks for both food and laundry are constant, and come in there, block the streets as well. Here, at this plan, the trucks will go down under, but they're going to be contiguous to the parking area and very close. Remember that we've moved the podium over by seven feet, six inches. I don't think that's going to do much to noise.
Okay, so you'd rather, so hold on, so you'd rather residence than, you don't want a hotel, you want residential, residential con, like condo or apartment building?
Much better to have more residence, answer your question.
Okay, all right, just trying to understand. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Carol.
Welcome.
Okay, Juana Carreras, is she here? There you are, come on up, and Elsbieta Gorska, who is appearing virtually, and Audrey Muller, who's also appearing virtually. Good evening, Juana.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me? No? How about there? Oh, I'll take my mask off, I guess, that would help. Hi, good evening. My name is Juana Carreras. I live in Birch Crest condominiums. I worked for the City of Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue Department for 26 years, and now I'm retired. I would like to bring up the response times from Station 13. The 90 percentile response time for Station 13 is, at this time, 6 minutes and 53 seconds, which is almost 7 minutes. Keeping in mind that we are still living with COVID, and our seasonal residents have not been here for over a year. I would like to also read a statement that was made by Dr. Alsman, who was the cardiologist for Broward Health, that spoke before the city on May 17, 2016, and this is what he said. Every minute that passes following a cardiac arrest incident, the chance of survival goes down 10%. And by five minutes, there is literally no chance of any functional or neurological recovery. So as by my statement is that seven-minute time response is unacceptable. So I would like you to please take this into consideration when voting for this project, because I am opposed to it. And I will also end by saying that the life that we may be saving on the next call may be our own, and I thank you for your time.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The seven minutes, from which, from which, where is that, where would the life safety, where would the EMS person be coming from that would take-
That would, that would be Station 13 Sunrise and the Intercoastal, which was response to the site.
And it takes seven minutes to get there from?
The 90 percentile right now is almost seven minutes, and that is today, and we were living in COVID times, and we are also don't have our seasonal people here. My building is at 20% capacity right now, because our seasonal residents have not been there for a year and a half. They are planning on coming back in November, and I assume that all the other buildings, surrounding buildings have the same issue, where those seasonal peoples and those people are not even here yet. So yes, these times are better than they have been in the past, but they will increase. And I'm here to tell you, I've walked a walk, and I know how this works.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, may I ask a question? This might also, I might have to have the fire chief come up, because I, I just really want us to be accurate on this for the record, because this is important to me. This was one of my issues when I first saw this project and not support it in 2019. So this is important to me, the EMS information. So what I'm looking at, and maybe the fire chief can help clarify, but what I'm reading is that in 2020, the citywide response time was 8 minutes and 18 seconds. But the response time for 13A, which is this station and this area around the Bay Shore Hotel, was 6 minutes and 53 seconds. So that shows that there is a 1 minute and 4 second quicker response time for this particular area than the citywide overall response time. I need to know if I'm being accurate in what I'm reading.
She said the same.
Right, well, 6 minutes-
She said 7 minutes.
Okay, but I just want to put it into context, so I know what we're talking about here.
Okay.
Because this is really important, and I want to know if what I'm reading, because I might not be reading these charts correctly, but I'm seeing that the average citywide response time, Mayor, is 8 minutes and 18 seconds.
Which is not good.
Right, and this is 6 minutes and 53 seconds.
That's what she said, 7 minutes.
So I want to know if that's true.
So Commissioner, you are correct in what you are saying. The 90th percentile for the entire city for every call, you're correct, it is, for 2020, it was 8 minutes and 18 seconds. And for Zone 13A, which is where the project would be located, would be that 6 minutes, the 90th percentile is 6 minutes and 53 seconds. So that means 90% of the time, our goal is that the first unit arrives in 6 minutes or less. The 90th percentile for 13A is 6 minutes and 53 seconds. For the total city, it is 8 minutes and 18 seconds. So it is in the top 10 of our best response times, and that is not from, that's not when the call, it's from when the call is received to the unit arrives on scene. That's what that 6 minutes and 53 seconds represents.
Okay, so then let me ask you this. Right now, the fire station is undergoing work.
Correct.
And the temporary fire station is moving closer south.
That's correct.
So how would you anticipate that that would impact this particular area in terms of EMS response time?
That will probably even shave more time off of that 6 minutes and 53 seconds, just because they won't have to come out of the station and go to A1A, and then go south on A1A. They'll be able to go right out of the temporary station site and go down to Birch Road and go south from there.
And then, when the station is complete on the bridge, Sunrise Bridge?
Right.
Will any of those improvements to that station have any impact at all on this response time, or do you think it would actually go back to, you just said it would shave off when it would, time when it would move further south to the temporary station that's being built now, on the old Natchez Hotel site?
Correct.
But will that impact it at all when it moves back again to the Sunrise Bridge?
It probably would add some more of that time back to it, just because they have to navigate the traffic, you know, out of that station and through the Sunrise down to A1A.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Oh, Mayor's gone.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Sorry.
Could I stay here?
No, I'm good.
Do you have any more questions?
I just wanted to clarify, because this is very important to me, and I think to the whole community, to know the accurate times and to know how this particular area stacks up in terms of the overall citywide response time as well.
Okay.
So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Commissioner Glassman. Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have three virtual speakers, and please forgive me if I mispronounce your first name, but Elsbieta Gorska, are you on, ma'am? Yes, okay.
Hello?
Yes, we'll have you speak next for two minutes.
Perfect. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. I want to thank you for time and opportunity to speak today. My name, you can call me Elizabeth. I'm a resident of the City of Fort Lauderdale and a hotel manager at Fort Lauderdale Beach. As a resident of Fort Lauderdale, I absolutely support this project. Our city needs to invest, improve, and grow. This investment will benefit our city's residents. It will also increase the tax revenue gathered from property taxes, directly supporting the neighbor here through the community and the city. As a young professional, I moved to Fort Lauderdale seeing development and progress, not a stagnation. As a hotel manager, Fort Lauderdale is internationally known as a tourist destination. We must compete on international scale and improve our destination. The market would improve with a luxury boutique hotel to expand the demographics and continue to attract adversity of tourists in the future. This project would be a marked improvement and a step in the right direction of refining our city. Right now, if you take a walk onto the corner of Birch Road and Bay Shore Drive under every stair, there is not even a sufficient sidewalk to the beach for our locals and our tourists. And details like that are remembered, and it diminishes the appeal of our city. Lastly, I want our city to be beautiful and not turn into shabby beach town. As a resident, taxpayer, a voter, I ask you to vote today for the improvement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a clock, I did it on my phone, sorry, I from here. But it was under two minutes, so go ahead, Mayor.
Audrey Muller, followed by Maria Elena Rooney, followed by Richie Baptista. Is Audrey on the line?
Uh, yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you for your time. Uh, I know these things always tend to get a, a bit late, so we appreciate you. Um, a little bit of background on me, I'm a Fort Lauderdale resident for over 20 years. I've had the pleasure of actually working with Paul Plata, George Colaney's my partner. But I'd like to speak a little bit on, uh, my being a resident of Fort Lauderdale as opposed to the real estate side. I live downtown, I spend a lot of time at the beach. There's very little area for me to park, um, which is a considerable attribute to, to what this project is presenting. Additionally, obviously, as you know, there's very little inventory for us to provide to people that are wanting to come to Fort Lauderdale. But I think there's a, a little bit more of a, of a personal side for me for this project. I've known Paul Plata and their family for over a decade, I sold them the first hotel. In the last year, over COVID, at one of their hotels, unfortunately, I lost my stepfather to COVID, and as you all know, we were unable to, um, be there with our loved ones at the hospital. And not just because it was me, but just because they were so gracious and just, um, I think what represents Fort Lauderdale, where I, um, we're a big city with a small-town feel, and it's people like Paul and companies like his that help endure and, and ensure our type of reputation. So I was able to stay there with my family, say goodbye to my stepfather on, um, on Zoom at his hotel, and, you know, these are the type of people that I think that we want expanding our city. And so, in addition to the parking, I think they've done a tremendous job on the setbacks, but it also comes down to character, and we want to continue to building strong character in our city, you know, which a lot of these large cities like Miami, eventually, they, that stops.
All right, well, thank you, Audrey.
Of course.
Your two minutes are, but thank you for participating tonight.
Of course.
So you're in favor of the project?
I am in favor of the project, I, I, I support hugely.
All right. Maria Elena Rooney, followed by Richie Baptista, both are virtual. Is Maria Elena there?
Uh, hello, um, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm speaking to oppose the project, uh, the way it's proposed. Our neighborhood has evolved into a residential neighborhood, it's not a hotel neighborhood. The little, every time a little hotel goes-
Did we lose you? Maria?
A permanent residence. This will completely, as far as I'm concerned, go backwards. Uh, it's not an A, we're not an A1A quarter, we're a residential area, the new buildings are strictly residential. And I know it's supposed to be partly residential, but I simply find it very difficult to believe that a building full of studio apartments will not turn into a rental pool, timeshare-type situation. And it's, it's pretty noisy now, and any, you know, it's just going, it's going to be much worse, any medical doctor or mental health professional will tell you that that kind of noise and light pollution harms the health of people, people that live there. People, you know, we're not people that visit it and have jobs there and then go home to a nice quiet apartments, we're stuck there, it's already noisy. My impression has been, and we've owned this building, this apartment since 1970, my impression has been that everybody that lives in my neighborhood thinks the W was the most horrendous mistake and regrets.
Maria? Are you there? Okay. I think we lost you.
I think, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's an out-of-scale building, uh, with, you know, in comparison to what's being built there, it's, it's too large.
Well, the thing is, Maria, your time is up, but let me just ask you something.
Yes.
This building is across the street from the W, and it's also across the street from what used to be called the Gale. And so those are both hotels and residential, right?
No, the Gale's residential, it has, it has some lower-level component, one-story, you know, the, the old building, but no, the Gale's a condominium.
But I'm, but-
And 312 is a condominium.
But the Escape, the Escape, the Escape, the former Escape Hotel, that's a hotel, correct?
Yes.
Where, I'm not sure which building you're referring to, I'm sorry.
The Gale, isn't that, that the Gale's residential, but doesn't it also have the historic part of that, that property on the, on the north side, the old Escape Hotel? Isn't that, are there hotel rooms?
Two-story.
Yeah.
It's two, it's two-story.
Okay. And then, and then the, the W Hotel is also hotel and residential, correct?
Well, as I understand it, the residential, they're all in a rental pool, or most of them are, so, uh, I don't think it, I don't consider it a residential, but the, the W and the Conrad have, have residential components, but they're thrown into a rental pool.
Okay, so you're saying that's-
Their studios.
So you're saying that's mostly rental or hotel? Now, this pro, this proposal is 115 residential and 168 hotel rooms. So you're saying that this area is only residential?
I'm saying the new buildings, that the Gale and, and I think it's 312, are residential buildings that have family apartments. The, the proposed building is a hotel, and all of the residential are studios, and those studios behave like hotel rooms, they don't behave like residential units. I've seen it in the W, and I've seen it in the Conrad.
Okay, all right.
That's, that's, that's the business plan, I don't care what, you know, and I, I found it disingenuous, the developer before said that would never happen, well, if they're condos, the developer is not there anymore, so he can't control that.
Okay.
Mayor, sorry.
Thank you so much.
I was trying to understand, is, is she saying the, at Bayshore, the residential part would be studios? Is that what she was referring to?
She's saying, she, she thinks that the residential part will be part of a, of a rental pool, and that they will essentially be transient units, not residential.
Is that what's, I mean, I don't know, is that what's going to happen, Courtney? I just don't know the business model for this.
Mr. Sorenson, no, it's not, and I believe previously, um, we stated that these are not going to be condominium hotel units, they are residential dwelling units. Pavel designed them because he saw they were a different size three years ago-
Yeah.
-than, than the other larger luxury.
And what, i- is this studio, or is it one-bedroom, or what, give us a sense of-
Mo, most, they are studios.
Most of them are studios.
Absolutely.
And so can you, again, just so I kind of understand the basics, can you buy it and then just rent it out all the time, or Airbnb, you know, an equivalent?
I think that would be up to the condominium association, I don't believe that's gonna, that's intended right now. That usually is not a good way to sell condominiums by saying that people, people can frequently rent, these are intended to be homeownership, or second homeownership, if you would like to spend months in Fort Lauderdale.
Okay, thanks, that, that helps, that helps me, Mayor, just understand this, thanks.
Very good. Richard Baptista, who's in virtual, followed by Andreas Meinhold, who is in person, and Barbie Pearson, who is virtual. Is Richie Baptista on the line?
Yes, I am, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, good evening.
Great, yeah, thanks for giving me also the opportunity to speak, and I just wanted to say that I am a member of the Beach, Central Beach Alliance, and we live along the Barrier Island, and Bayshore Drive is pretty much part of our weekly walk. And after viewing the recent presentation especially, I think they've done a remarkable job, I am very excited about it and stand behind it. And basically, that's just about why I wanted to tune in tonight. And, uh, and, and hearing some of the past speakers, I do want to give another bonus to the, the appreciation of wider sidewalks, which I've seen, you know, really a great improvement the past four or five years that we've lived nearby. So, I just think they did a beautiful job, I'm excited about it, I hope you guys stand behind it, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Andreas Meinhold, are you here? Yeah, the other you are. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Andreas Meinhold, and I am resident of Fort Lauderdale as a hotel asset manager and consultant advisor. I follow closely hotel development and branding, industry trends, and provided benefits of new hotel developments to South Florida in general, and Fort Lauderdale in particular. I am not retained by the developers. In my professional opinion, the proposed Bayshore Hotel benefits the local community enormously, primarily for the following reasons. The project is a lifestyle boutique hotel and resort condominium intended to be affiliated with an impactful marketing platform for independent hotels managed by a third party. What do I mean with that? It's not another Marriott, Hyatt, Intercontinental, or similar product, which are most of your large hotels. As such, the type of customer targeted is seeking a unique, individualized, high-quality vacation experience. The development does not lend itself for major group movements or event celebrations. The targeted condo owners will be primarily from out of state seeking to have a piater for leisure purposes. There is no comparable hotel or project in the market currently. The strongly focused residential design, in combination with the manicured landscaping as shown around the development, ascertains superior quality of operation and represents a measurable benefit to the surrounding real estate and ownership. Hotels in general are critical components in support to local communities and their economics, career opportunities, community development, increased sales taxes, revenue and growth. Hotels are an integral part of the fabric of each community across the United States. Through their capital investment, owners support tourism-related development and promotion, civic leadership, and charitable contributions and sponsorship. Hotels help to attract new tourists to their communities by investing in visitor outreach and destination awareness campaigns. The city will be substantially generating significant tax revenues through lodging, sales, real estate taxes, et cetera. Hotels and lodging are in general the largest contributors to the city's destination marketing fund. And last but not least, we need to generate employment. The development, once completed, will offer more than 200 jobs, primarily full-time. Hotel jobs provide the most opportunity, good benefits, and wages within the tourism industry.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Barbie Pearson, uh, who's appearing virtually, followed by Rochelle Coatsy, followed by Gary Slowinski. Is Barbie Pearson on the line? Yes, you are.
Yes, this is, this is Barbie Pearson, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go right ahead.
Okay, I've been a resident on the Barrier Island since 1980. Anyway, I'm for the project, I feel that what they've done with the building, as far as it's appropriate for the area, like you had mentioned, it's, you've got the W Hotel, and as far as size, it steps down, and there's another tall building, uh, next to it. So as far as the height, I don't think that's an issue, and, uh, with that part of it, and they have a step down, um, they've taken into the consideration of the neighbors, maybe a lot are going to be losing a view, but, and most people won't be happy with this, but that's part of the way things happen. I know I wouldn't be happy, but there's always going to be something that may be built in front or beside or whatever, and we don't have a choice in that. So anyway, I do feel it's appropriate for the area, I like the design, the mid-century design on the retail part, uh, I don't know if that's the parking or the ceiling or whatever part, but, uh, the design is nice, I think they've worked hard with it. And it's on the south end of the North Beach Village, closer to the hotel, so that's why I feel it's appropriate in the area, and I'm definitely for it, thank you.
All right, great, thank you, ma'am. Rochelle Coatsy, is she in? And followed by Gary Slowinski, is Gary in the room still? You're next, after. Good evening.
Hey, good evening, Commissioner, Mayor and City Commissioners, lovely to be here, I'm a new resident of the Beach community, and very excited to be there. I want to say that we have a lot of new people coming into town, uh, who are looking to Fort Lauderdale to be the next step. We should embrace these wonderful projects that have design, that are visually, uh, appealing, and not have what we've had before, and sit with what we've had before. But I think what the Commissioners and you, the Mayor, have done is responsible growth, and have looked at every aspect of each project, so I applaud you for that, and for how you've diligently gone ahead and done that, and I do really favor this project, I think, I think it's a wonderful addition.
Okay, thank you so much. Gary? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, good to see you guys, thank you for having us. I've been a resident on Fort Lauderdale Beach since 1990. I've seen it basically get swallowed up by construction, there's construction going on everywhere. I'm actually for this project, though, because, thank God for the birches, for leaving us some space for some nature, and thank you for actually adding the park where the old parking lot used to be across the Elbow Room, that's a blessing. We, everyone in my building, the small building, I used to live on Alihambra, and they took that behind Casablanca away, my building that I used to live in there, and they put a hotel up there, and there's nothing but concrete and construction everywhere, I don't even think they left a couple trees there. So, seeing the floor plan for the new hotel, they actually came to our building and actually asked us what we'd like to see, um, which was really impressive. So, showing the wider sidewalks, the more landscape, you know, being places to be able to walk the dog still, where you feel like you're not composed by just a concrete jungle is a blessing. I also believe that the whole exterior part with the added restaurant, they said they were going to add a market, which is also great, because the only place that I can walk to, to the store, is basically the CVS, which is really high beach prices, and they don't really have any, any food, and you have to go to the, into the hotels to get any kind of like, quality markets, other than going over the bridges to get to Publix. So, I feel that unless you guys are going to make it a park, or not have anybody build something, there's going to be noise there completely, because that's what you get when you live on the beach, I think they, these guys did an amazing job, and I'm 100% for it.
All right, well, great, thank you so much.
I'm sorry, could I just ask one question?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, what building was that, that you said that you lived in, that they came to your building?
I live on Seville Street, and, um, the second building, it's called Alto Brisa.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Tiffany Bader, followed by Rich Hastier. Is Tiffany in the room?
Oh, you are.
And Rich, followed by, uh... Courtney, who doesn't have a last name, but I think I know who you are.
I dropped it.
She's like Madonna.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to speak. I am here for this project, when I first moved to- here for this project. When I first moved to Fort Lauderdale, I was a resident of the Birch neighborhood. It is my favorite place to go back to the beach as a local now. I couldn't afford to keep my place on the beach, but I did purchase in town. And my son and I love to go over to the beach there. There will be incorporated of 120 transient parking spaces, which I think will be good for us locals that don't live on the Barrier Islands. And I'm excited about the market as well. I think that would be a place to grab some food while we're out there. And I'm for the project.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So Rich, followed by Julie Jones, followed by Carolyn Paddock.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. You said that perfectly, by the way. That never happens.
Oh, thank you.
I came to South Florida, Fort Lauderdale, with my parents in 1963. To give you a little insight on my perspective, what I've seen down here, federal highway between Hillsborough Boulevard and Sunrise had three traffic lights. Dixie Highway was dirt, and anything west of that was farmland. So I've seen...
Wasn't Dixie Highway like the main road down here to get from up north?
It was. Pre-9, there was no I-95, there was no Pompano Fashion Square. It's changed dramatically.
A little bit.
And I compliment the city of Fort Lauderdale in the way they've developed. It's become, I think, a boom, and I think they've done a great job with it. You look at the old Sistrunk area, the run up and down federal highway with the new buildings, and Fort Lauderdale Beach especially. We've got the Four Seasons, the Hall of Fame going on. There's a new marina. I think that this, especially being a boutique hotel, is going to have an amazing draw. I think they're going to be very successful when this project is built. I think they're going to sell out, and I think it's going to do complement the beach and the other commercial buildings and things that are going on, development. So I'm for this 100%.
All right, great. Thank you so much, sir. Julie Jones, followed by Carolyn Paddock, followed by Ian DeMello, who would be appearing virtually. Is Julie here?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this evening. I have lived and worked on the Barrier Islands for many years now. I've seen the changes in the beach area, how hard small businesses and responsible developers are working to transform the area, to make it a more pleasant place for both residents and for visitors. So I'd like to just hit hard on these points, if I may, please. I believe that Powell and his team have worked extremely hard to overcome the objections with this building by changing the sidewalks, the concealed car parking, increasing the landscaping. I think it's a very special building that looks beautifully positioned on the beach in relation to the other developments around it. I do think that it's a wonderful match for the changing demographics of our city in terms of people wanting smaller, more personal environments, more, a more boutique situation with high-quality services. I also think the Garden Restaurant and the High End Market is a nice addition to the amenities there. There's definitely a need for the beach to have more of the new developments, which are now considered to be much more appealing and safer. After the surfside situation, people are very aware of wanting to be around buildings that are built to the latest standards in terms of safety. And I think that, I can tell you that people ask me increasingly about newer developments as opposed to older, older properties. Heavy focus, as I say, on the, on the actual architecture of the building, the landscaping. I think it's, it's going to be a great addition for that particular section of Bay Shore, because it's very, it's very flat and unappealing in that particular community.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Carolyn, followed by Ian DeMello, followed by Gigi Tangi.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for having me. I am, my name, first of all, my name is Carolyn Paddock, and I am for the project. I am one of the many that have come down here. I'm from New York, and I absolutely love it down here. I live at the beach. I actually live on Breakers, not far away from where this proposed project is. And I see things popping up in the area, juice shops, restaurants, bakeries, and Breakers Avenue is becoming more and more vibrant. I like the idea of walking around and having nice things to go to. And I, I like the idea of this hotel. I think it's thoughtful. I've watched what people have to say, and I think that it is, would be a benefit to the neighborhood. I love the idea of a restaurant and, and a grocery store. That sounds wonderful, actually, that you can walk to. And in terms of jobs and for the neighborhood, I think it would be an improvement.
Okay, thank you so much. Ian DeMello, are you on the line? Ian?
Mayor Ian DeMello from Law Firm in Shippensburg, Mass. I'm here as litigation and appellate counsel on behalf of the applicant, so.
Oh.
But are you on the line?
I am here in person.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I failed to give Ian sign-in instructions.
Is Lauren, is Lauren Paffner here?
Also, also on the team, Mayor.
Okay. And I know Mr. Borges is on the team. And I know Abby Loughlin. There you are. What team are you on tonight?
Team, Abby team.
Abby, followed by Paul Chetl, followed by Sandra Goldston.
Abby for Congress.
Abby. No, this direction, this direction over here.
I have one image to put out.
Okay. You have two minutes. Thank you.
Want to go first while I put up my image?
Go ahead. What are we waiting for?
She has an image.
She has an image.
Waiting for absentee balance.
Are you holding us up? Come on.
Not me. I'm good. Got water. No, just water.
Why don't you keep talking while the image is materializing?
It's coming. Hopefully. All right.
Is that the image?
Not the image. There we go. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and of course, Congressman McKenzie. I moved to North Beach Village shortly after the Great Recession of 2008. And since that time, I have witnessed the transformation of the neighborhood buildings, building by building by building. I have seen what it takes to bring a project to fruition and all the struggles that exist. But the greatest struggle that we face in the neighborhood is the condition of the public realm. Most of the motel buildings were dilapidated or empty when I first came here. The sidewalks were cracked and broken, and most of the lighting was out, and there was not a tree to be seen. Now, about 15 years later, the sidewalks are still cracked and broken, lighting is out, and no trees have been added, except for new development. When new development comes, finally, conditions start to improve. This was a, a street, this is in front of the Adagio on Bay Shore, and this is what the condition looked like before Adagio was built. But this doesn't mean that the loss of these four buildings is easy. It is a deep cut to the heart, but I know the reality of what it takes to maintain these. These four buildings may not be important, but they are important to me. And that's why it was very, very important to me to make sure that what comes next is good. The new owner must be someone who is a dedicated partner in the neighborhood and someone who will go the extra mile. Pawal Plata has shown himself to be that dedicated partner. He has listened to his neighbors, reached out, and made changes when necessary. He cares very much about the public realm, and he wants the best public space. And he does care about the history of these buildings. He is doing his best to honor them. There will be a space in the new building dedicated to the history of North Beach Village, and he has pledged to help with other projects that build awareness and documentation of the mid-century modern movement. This is a very important project. It connects four corners of the neighborhood. It brings our neighborhood together. It is the missing piece of the public realm for this area. We will get rid of dangerous backout parking and finally have wide, well-lit and shaded sidewalks. This means a lot in a neighborhood where people are constantly walking to the beach. I ask you to support this project and help our neighborhood reach its full potential as a great place to live, walk, and bike. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Paul Chetl, followed by Sandra Goldston.
Hello, Mr. Chetl. Good evening, Mayor, Commission, Congressman. My name is Paul. I am opposed to the project. Very simply, this is a quasi judicial hearing. This is a project in a legal process, so I'm going to deal with five facts. I believe the city of Fort Lauderdale has made five material errors. Very quickly, I believe that Exhibit Eight, second page, 827 trips is categorically false. The second error, I believe that no additional uses were added to the traffic study or taken into consideration under ITE Edition 10. The quality restaurant, which is 4,588 or 58 square feet, that was not taken into consideration. That's code number 931 in the addition. Third, I don't believe that the uses were taken into consideration. There are material differences and errors and omissions between Exhibits Eight, Six, and Two. Fourth, I don't believe that this project abides by or complies with the ULDR, specifically adequacy requirements. If you look at 47-25.2M4A, that is not a voluntary thing to comply with. If you have a project with trips that exceed 1,000, which is what this is, you have to have a traffic study. We have no traffic study. We have Exhibit Eight, which is a two-page statement, which has material error, material emission, omissions, material misstatements. It is not worth the paper it is written on. City staff did not review this. When you get to the city manager's recommendation to you to approve, eight pages, top of Page Four, he relied on staff. That entire trip section is categorically false. He's not, it's not his fault. He didn't do it intentionally. He relied on staff. They did not do the job. You cannot support this project. Given the circumstance that you're in, you have to vote to deny based on the product that is in front of you right now factually. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, sir.
Mayor, may I just say a few things to that? Because I, I just need to have facts here. So Paul said there was no traffic impact study. That was true when this came to us in 2019. But I leave, I believe a traffic, a full traffic impact study was done on January 10th, 2020.
There's nothing in the backup, and as the city attorney will tell you, that this is due process. We all have to be privy to the same information. It has to be challengeable.
Was this in the backup?
This is a quasi judicial hearing. We do not have whatever you have.
Was this traffic study in the backup?
No, they only exhibit Eight, which is two pages, which is a traffic statement. We do not have a study.
Was this traffic study from Keith in the backup from January 10th, 2020?
I'd have to move to Mr. Farhado. I don't...
I don't have it.
Commissioner Glassman, I didn't, I didn't see it in the online backup. It was submitted to the city with the, all the documents. I know that then an executive summary was asked for. The traffic studies have charts, et cetera.
Right. So, because I actually had a few questions about it, but so Anthony, why wasn't this traffic study that I've read included in the backup? It's dated January 10th, 2020.
Anthony Farhado, Director of Sustainable Development, the, we relied on the traffic statement, because a full-blown study wasn't required for this.
I understand, because it was under 1,000 trips.
Right.
But they went ahead and did it anyway, because that was a major concern that came to us in 2019.
Correct.
That we didn't have this data.
And that was their prerogative.
Okay, so any reason why this wasn't included in the backup?
We, I don't believe we had it at the time of publication.
Well, it was, it's dated January 10th, 2020. Okay. I'm going to ask some more questions about this later when we get a chance to talk to the applicant, so that's okay. But I just wanted everyone to know that, I don't know why, and I guess apologies that it's not in the backup, but I did see a traffic impact study.
Understood, Commissioner, Commissioner Glassman. That's not atypical due to size, because they're a couple hundred pages with charts. I will just indicate on other projects, there's usually a request for an executive summary, and then I know people can always go to the clerk's office. I, I believe this is the protocol appropriate or not.
Okay.
You may decide, but that, it's typical for every project.
Okay, also, my notes, at least in the CAM, it says that the restaurant is 3,600 square feet. Paul said a little under 5,000, I think, square feet. So what is the actual number? The CAM says 3,600 square feet of restaurant.
The original CAM from 2019?
No, I'm looking at the CAM dated October 21, 2021.
You look at the site plan, which is Exhibit Two, I believe 20 of 30, you will see that the restaurant is, the restaurant square footage on both the left and the right tables show 4,500, either 58 or 88, I forget.
Okay, so what is it? Is it the 4,500 or the 3,600?
Definitely not 3,600, and it's not included at all in the traffic statement.
Okay.
That's the point. The, the traffic statement, 827 trips, is categorically wrong.
Okay. Okay. And then also, Anthony, could you address this? I, I didn't catch, I know he said something about adequacy and neighborhood compatibility. I know that staff says that it, it meets that, but I'm not exactly sure which part of adequacy and neighborhood compatibility he's referring to.
I'm not sure I understand the question you're trying to, there's several parts of adequacy, so.
Well, Paul had mentioned, maybe Paul could just repeat that, and then you can address.
Trips? No, Mr. Chetl's correct. There is a threshold, but it doesn't meet that threshold.
Right.
It didn't meet that threshold when they did the more conservative traffic study in 2019, and it doesn't meet it now.
Right. No, I understand, because staff has said it's under 1,000. But again, I have one anyway, but...
Well, with the extra 1,500 square feet that, that is, that is purported to be part of the restaurant, would that bring it over 1,000?
That I don't know. I'd have to defer to the applicant. From my perspective, we had the 3,600, I believe, square footage in the backup material, and that was my understanding of the size of the restaurant.
And the thousand, the number thousand, let's get, let's be clear on that. That's, is that, is that per day or at peak hours?
That's peak hour trips.
Paul, Paul, you may sit down. Your, your testimony has been accepted. I'm now speaking with staff. This is not a debate time, so please have a seat.
975.
Please have a seat. Please have a seat. Your testimony is complete. Thank you. So... So, 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 Mr. Farhado, if it were taking over 5,000 square feet in a restaurant space, would that exceed the 1,000? And what does 1,000 represent?
It's 1,000 peak hour trips per day.
1,000 peak hour?
I believe so.
So it would be 1,000 an hour, it could be several thousand for the day?
I'd have to go back and read it to, to make sure, and perhaps...
All right, well, there'll be some discussion, so if you...
Yeah.
Take that time and...
Right.
Help explain to us what that actually means.
I'll confer with Ben and...
Right, that'll be great, because actually, I think it's only, well, it's 36 net new AM peak hour trips and 44 net new PM peak hour trips. That was according to the original traffic statement. That was in Exhibit Eight originally for us. But as I said, I'm just curious, and I do, I will have some questions, Mayor, about the traffic study that I've read. But do we know any answers to the...
Sandra's been, Sandra's been very patient.
Yes, I'm sorry. I apologize. But I do want to know what the size of the restaurant is anyway. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Sandra. Good evening, Sandra.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Sandra Goldston, and I live in Springtide.
Could you please speak into the microphone, please?
My name is Sandra Goldston, and I live in Springtide. Appreciate all the people that have spoken today, but I don't believe they live in the neighborhood. I would like to know how many emails and phone calls you guys have received today, and I agree with the CBA. This is going to be a huge problem for those of us who do live on Bay Shore. As it is now, as we've spoken before, the trucks are parked there every day, the sewer people are there at the western pumping out sewer four hours a day, once a week. What is going to happen for us? The view is going to be destroyed. If people want restaurants, and they want parks, and they want parking, that's a better suggestion. To put up a huge building is going to be inappropriate. I implore you, please, consider us who live there, not the people who live around there. I live there. I have to live with that. It's going to be a huge inconvenience and a problem for those of us who live there. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sandra. Dan Tixler, are you here in the audience? Do you want to speak? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? I have nobody else who has signed up. Did you sign up? Okay, I don't have it. What's that? Paula, I don't have anything for you, but you, you're, you're, just, if you don't mind coming up to the podium and just waiting when the, when Dan finishes, and we can certainly ask you to.
They got those stickers that they had to sign.
Yeah, I don't know why I don't have their, no. Okay.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Trantellus, Vice Mayor Moritas, District Commissioner Glassman, and fellow city commissioners and congressmen. The area known as North Beach Village is very special to me as I own property one block away on Birch Road at Leisure House condominium. I also work on Fort Lauderdale Beach Boulevard as Director of Sales for Four Seasons Private Residences, also located in North Beach Village. I also am the current President of Harbor House East, and my business office is located in Ritz Carlton. So as they say, I live, eat, work, all in the village. I fully support the Bay Shore Hotel at 3030 Bay Shore Drive, and I believe the landscape architecture is exactly what is called for in the master beach plan and actually exceeds all requirements. The corner of Birch and Bay Shore Drive is presently an asphalt-wide cold intersection. The landscape architecture of Bay Shore Hotel will give future developers and city staff lesson on how a building should be surrounded by smart, green, lush landscaping with proper wide sidewalks away from vehicular traffic. The current corner on the site and the old motel across the street have no architectural characteristics and are reminiscent of average motels that are commonplace in Lauderdale by the Sea or Pompano Beach. Powell Plata, the owner of the property, is a local resident who resides, works, and raises family in La Sola, so it is in his best interest to keep the community truly a better place. Almost every major hotel on Fort Lauderdale Beach is presently owned by companies outside the city. Powell is a Fort Lauderdale man and truly a fine man. I've known him in the community, in every sector of the community. I've spoken to him on how he will preserve the history of the past in the hotel showcasing our history and how he will incorporate a hotel with a very friendly relationship with the current vibe of the LGBT guesthouse community in the village, which is personally important to me. As Fort Lauderdale Beach is known as an international world-class destination, we must support interesting hotels that adopt good architecture that shows off our city throughout the world. Finally, as President of the Nearby Condominium Association Harbor House East on Birch Road, I offer you our board approval for Bay Shore Hotel. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Paula, please introduce yourself, and you've been sworn in. Have you been sworn in?
I have.
Okay. Oh, I see your sticker. Okay, great. Thank you.
I have been sworn in. I'm ready to go.
I don't know why I didn't get your.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. I stand before you this evening opposing the Bay Shore project as I did June 4th, 2019. Even though 870 days have passed, nothing of any significance on this project has changed since so much time has passed. Let me repeat again what I said to you on June 4th, 2019. We had three neglected motels in the neighborhood. The owner came and refurbished them, keeping the charm of Old Fort Lauderdale. They created the Gisella Collection, a group of small charming hotels. We mastered the hotels, keeping the city's architectural heritage and maintaining the integrity of the historical properties. They won a very prestigious award, and the neighborhood was very, very grateful that they had chosen to keep the charm of Old Fort Lauderdale since so few structures still remain. Then, two years later, after winning this award, they wanted to demolish these lovely structures to make way for another unwanted, unneeded hotel, condominium, restaurant, and retail shop. We do not need or do we want another project like this in our neighborhood? The neighbors overwhelmingly voted against it, 202 to 28. It is too large and way too close to existing residential properties. The quality of life will greatly suffer. Longtime existing properties will lose all natural light. A wind tunnel would be created. Noise and smells will be constant and overwhelming. Traffic is already a problem. We are already living with failing roads, and a hotel condo restaurant of this magnitude will create more problems, the biggest being emergency response time. We all know emergency response time has increased every year as a result of more and more development, which creates more and more traffic, which in turn slows our first responders from getting to someone whose life could be at stake. Please fix existing problems before creating new ones. And in closing, yes, Dean, I would like to again quote our mayor. No neighborhood will be infringed upon or our quality of life sacrificed. Please, don't let this happen to our neighborhood. Thank you.
I have a question, Mayor. Paula, why do you say our neighborhood? You, you moved from there.
Okay, I'm still part of Central Beach, and I still care about, I'm fighting for things on the other side of the bridge.
I just, I know, I just want, factually, I just want it to be accurate because.
Right.
It's, you're not actually, you don't live in the central.
I do not live there. I moved two miles away, as you're well aware of.
Okay. So we have to be accurate.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I said.
Two miles away.
Just, I just want us to be accurate. Thank you. Facts are very important. Accuracy is very important.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker. Please introduce yourself.
Can you please pass those up, please? Mike Rody, R O D Y.
Hello, Mike.
Hello. I, if I knew, I knew if these meetings are this lively, guys, I'd hang here all the time.
Yeah, but I don't want anybody handing me anything.
Yeah, just leave it.
Okay, no problem, no problem.
Leave it with the clerk for the record.
Distinguished Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for your time tonight. I am a concerned taxpayer of Fort Lauderdale, and I oppose this Bay Shore project, just as the majority of you guys have done in 2019. I have provided everyone with excerpts, sitting on the desk right there, on the two, the site plan, two-page traffic summary, and scope of revisions provided by the developer. As you will see by this paperwork submitted, we have major discrepancies presented to this commission and, and to the public on this quasi judicial resolution. The original statement earmarks 975 trips for this project for the 3,600 square foot restaurant versus the new traffic summary, of which the restaurant is not even mentioned on the summary, and allocates 827 trips. Both provide 168 hotel rooms and 115 condos. It seems the restaurant has gotten larger, and the trips have gone down. Very strange. The original site plan states the restaurant use is approximately 3,600 square feet. The new site plan increases this to 4,855 square feet. Nothing has been mentioned in the scope of revisions provided to you, the city, or the public, by the developer. The scope of revisions submitted to this commission makes no mention of additional uses, increase in size of uses, and makes no mention of the significant increase in the size of this restaurant's square footage in the new site plan, which again is much larger. Mayor, I sat and watched hours of this commission's meetings, and I stand behind your words when you had said we have to draw a line in the sand, and the barrier island is the place to do it. Please stand by the concerned neighbors in this area, District Commissioners, Glassman and Sorensen during these meetings. I watched, both of you have major concerns about traffic EMS times and fluctuating trip numbers. I remember correctly, you'd called for a study, don't know if it was done, to handle and get a better idea of your concerns about the traffic. Just if you have concerns, the neighborhood has concerns. The most important, of course, is traffic and EMS, EMS response time. Commissioners Moritas and McKenzie, I respect your conclusion back in 2019, but I'm asking you to reconsider this due to EMS response times on the island. With the facts in front of this commission and the public, I submit that the only vote to do is to reaffirm no. Thank you very much for your time, Commissioner.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? Everyone has spoken. Actually, I called him, and he didn't answer. Okay, is Robert Nolan on the line?
Yes.
Hello, Robert.
Good evening.
You have two minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Sorry for, it was a mix-up. My name is Robert Nolan, and I speak to you as a resident of the Central Beach area of Fort Lauderdale, as well as a father, a brother, uncle, a healthcare executive, and an interfaith minister. Over two years ago, the city asked us to demonstrate the Bay Shore project before you is irresponsible development on the barrier island. We did that, and the commission voted it down. The testimony showed the technical reasons to deny the project in the air, in the following areas. Building setbacks not consistent with code, excessive building length, lack of clarity around traffic and demonstrate, as demonstrated by inconsistent trip calculations, concern over emergency response times in excess of six minutes, infrastructure concerns as demonstrated by an aging D-31 pump station which services the area, the demolition of a portion of Birch Estates Platte, which is, which in its entirety could be designated as historic, and the deterioration of the quality of life in the neighborhood. Changing the color of the building and moving it over seven feet does not address the issues raised that led to the initial denial. Once again, I ask you to vote to deny the project on the facts presented. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Robert. Okay. Last but not least, or I should say last, is Guy Cerullo? Is Guy on the line?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a resident of Birch Crest Apartments at 336 North Birch Road. Commissioner Glassman, I agree that facts are important, and I'll point out that most who spoke in favor of this project tonight were not actual residents of our neighborhood. In addition, despite what Courtney Crush stated tonight, Birch Crest has not heard a thing from either her or Platta for three years. I urge the commission to vote against this project as you did in 2019. The developer did not amend the project in good faith. A few feet of modifications does not amount to real change. So this hulking tower is now seven feet further from our building. I believe that's insulting to the commission and to the residents of Fort Lauderdale, in particular, our neighborhood. We are not Miami or even the Gulf Ocean Mile. We don't need buildings butting right up against of one another. When these projects are allowed to get variances and shoehorn into tight property lines, the quality of life plummets. Central Beach is already at capacity for sewer, water, and traffic. This tiny precious barrier island can take no more. The Alhambra Twin Towers, Beach Boys, Two Mariots, and myriad other projects are already approved. When I walk along Bay Shore, I see and I smell standing water at the other mammoth mistake right on Bay Shore, the W Hotel condo. This monster is at most half-full during the high months of winter and spring breaks. The sign advertising residences has been on the corner for five years. Now, there'll be more right across the street? Half-bacon hotel condos like the W are not a good look for Fort Lauderdale. We need quality, not quantity. Quality that fits with the neighborhood, which is right on the border of North Beach Village. I plead with you to do the right thing and vote this disaster down again. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Are we here a motion to close public hearing?
Mayor, I, I'll be happy to make the motion, but because I was just challenged on some facts, I just wanted to respond to one thing on that.
It's closed public hearing first.
Oh, okay. Move to closed public hearing.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Yes. Okay. Did you have a question, Vice Mayor?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas.
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus.
Yes, a public hearing is now closed, so now Commissioner.
Yes, thanks. And just a quick point on that, because I was challenged on some clarifications. I specifically started keeping tab of the speakers, and I wanted to also note where they said they lived. I can't help it if they're not telling the truth, but according to what they said, first of all, 19 people spoke in favor of the project, nine people spoke against the project, and overwhelming majority of the 19 actually said they lived in the neighborhood or the Central Beach, even one saying he was the president of a neighboring building. And just about all of the people against, the nine against, were either at Spring Tide or Birch Crest, the two adjacent buildings. So that was what I just noted from all the people that gave their addresses, and so.
I don't, I'm not sure about your numbers. That was 28, and we had like over 50 people spoke.
No, I, I don't think you had 50 people.
Well, I.
Really?
You had 31.
I had 29.
31 spoke.
So I was pretty close. Maybe I missed a few.
31.
This is more than 31, though. Please don't, please, this is not.
Yeah, that's okay. Well, actually, I'll address that. The emails ran about 50/50, actually.
Okay, well, go ahead. Go ahead.
That's okay, no. There were 31, Jeff? Okay, so I missed three. I apologize.
But that was including Courtney, so 30.
So 30. So I missed two. I apologize.
Pretty good.
I apologize. I missed two.
Pretty good.
But I certainly didn't count 50.
And two people.
What?
Were not, we didn't get a slip from.
Well, maybe that's it.
I have 34, but whatever.
Okay. Well, you went down from 50 to 34. Okay. Okay. Anyway, I just wanted to make that point. So if I missed the count by two, I apologize, but as I said, there were quite a bit of people from that neighborhood and.
Well, go ahead.
That's all. I'm good.
That's it?
Yeah, I have questions for.
Would you like to help, help us out here on this traffic study thing that you have in front of us?
Yeah, I, I, well, I had questions about the traffic study, but first, if we, I have questions for several members of the team. Okay, I don't need to talk about EMS anymore because we got that, and I thanked the fire chief for that. We do know that the EMS time in this neighborhood is 1 minute and 4 seconds quicker than the overall, overall citywide response, so I don't need to talk about EMS. So let's talk about traffic. I have, I know that originally we got a traffic statement because staff said there were less than 1,000 trips, and it didn't require a full-blown traffic study. But I'm, I've read and studied what's called a traffic study, so I don't know. I asked if I could get it, and I got it, but again, it's dated January 10th, 2020. Am I the only one that got it?
I never saw it.
Okay.
But why don't you help us?
Okay, I'm gonna help you. I'm gonna help you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna help you walk right through. Okay?
I got that.
Okay. And this is very helpful, because this was, this is one of my key, key reasons for not supporting this in 2019. So again, it says that the, um, and I don't know, Courtney, maybe if you can help me, let's go to page 17. This is the level of service. Now, for those of you that, that's LOS. Roads are rated A through F, obviously graded, and that's self-explanatory. So Courtney, um, there's a column that says future without the project and there's a column that says future with the project.
Can we, can we put that up on the screen somehow?
Yes, you have it. That's page 17 of the full-blown, that's the last page of the traffic study.
Thanks for your help.
While they're looking for that, what I will say is one of the things that I was having a problem with when this came to us in 2019 is we didn't have this level of detail on the study. So I was assuming that much of the information that we were given for the Beach Boys Plaza that night also would apply here. But now what this traffic study does is it looks at A1A in Bay Shore, A1A in Rio Mar, Bay Shore and North Birch, Rio Mar and North Birch. So it's those five major.
So as a result of your reading that, what are you, what conclusions are you drawing that you'd like to?
Well, according to, according to the traffic study, according to the traffic study, the worst level of service here as opposed to further south closer to La Solis and certainly by Beach Boys Plaza, where we did run into some problems, the worst level of service is here at A1A and Rio Mar, which is a, a CC existing from 2019. That was one of my questions, because I wanted to know, first of all, it goes from CC and then it actually goes from AA, it stays at AA, future with the project. But I had other questions with regards to that. I will say that the worst level.
This building's on the corner of Birch and Bay Shore. So what's the, what's the level of service there?
The level of service all through 2019 was AA or AB. Again, depending on the actual intersection corner. And then the future without the project, it stays obviously at the same. But then the future with the project, it stays the same. AA, AA, AB, AB. So actually, I'm sorry, it goes from AA to AB for SB. And SB is what again, Courtney?
Southbound, southbound, Commissioner.
The southbound, thank you. So this, that's the only, that's the only drop. It goes on the southbound from AA to AB at Bay Shore and Birch. Again, A and B throughout. But some of the levels, again, um, they only go from AA to AB, nothing worse from AA to AB. Now, if you look at, um, table six, the intersections again, and it's, that's done on a Saturday. The one I just read you was done on a Tuesday in October. And this is also October, but it's done on a Saturday when obviously you would think there's more traffic. However, what you just asked for, Mayor, Bay Shore Drive and Birch, it again goes from AA to AB on both the southbound and northbound. Those are the only, only decreases. Again, I shouldn't say only, because A1A and Bay Shore goes from AA, southbound, to AB.
So they're not, they're not fail, they're not failing roads or failing intersections?
No, it's not like further south at La Solis and some of the intersections we looked at. So again, and the conclusion, just so you know, if you haven't read this traffic study, it's 17 pages.
Before we go to the conclusion, Commissioner, can I ask a question about that, the tables? What is, if I'm understanding, there's some discrepancy around the square footage of the restaurant. What's the square footage of the restaurant in this analysis we're looking at?
It actually, Commissioner Sorensen, it's not based on square footage. If I may briefly, when the traffic impact statement, which was required to accompany the 2018, 2019 application, was submitted and methodology reviewed, while the resort hotel, which is the traffic category for this type of hotel, which is distinguishable, by the way, from a hotel that will have conventions like the W. This does not have conference rooms and host conferences, but does have amenities, lobby store, lobby store, et cetera, and restaurants. Even though that definition included restaurants, Benjamin Restrepo, who was the city's traffic engineer at the time, asked that a 157-seat restaurant be added, as if it was independently on the property next to the proposal. He did that because he wanted to be conservative and wanted to see if adding that restaurant independently would breach the 1,000-trip threshold. It didn't. Even double counting, and I, you can see that from the transcript of the, our June 2019 hearing, we discussed that. The total trips with double counting the restaurant was 975, including an independent 157-seat restaurant. When the analysis was done, again, Benjamin Restrepo was also here to look at the surrounding levels of service. He had Lisa Bernstein use resort hotel. He didn't want to pretend there was more. He was doing that solely to see if the daily, it is 1,000 trips per day, Mayor, the daily 1,000 was breached. So to answer what I heard, I double, did double-check. The restaurant happens to be 3,600 square feet, but that, that is independent of how ITE asks you to calculate restaurant, which is based on seats. It was 3,600 square feet in the plan at the time and it, and it remains that, so wanted to clarify that.
Remains 3,600 square feet and remains seat-wise, 157?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Yeah, the seats are not laid out.
So this 4,500 is not accurate?
I was trying to, I have not yet found out where that appeared. We've been looking at the plans. And I'm happy to continue to do so, but that's not what was put in the traffic studies.
Maybe if you can get, just kind of see where they're referencing that. Sorry, Commissioner.
Is there anyone that can still finish with traffic with me? Does that have one more question with traffic?
I just advise that that exhibit has not been accepted by the commission, so we should not be making reference to any exhibit.
I don't know, yeah, I don't, oh, he was saying exhibit two to the site.
This gentleman's exhibit.
And I'm just looking at the site plan, which is part of the backup published online.
Okay, thank you. So Courtney, help me understand, if you look at the level of service for Tuesday, October 22nd, on the top half of the page, go to the bottom where it's the intersection of Rio Mar and North Birch. Now, the future is predicted without the project. Look just the bottom line. Eastbound, AB, westbound, BB, northbound, AA, and southbound, AA. So that's without the project. So.
Look, can we just pull that up just so we can see? Is that possible?
I'm happy to. I apologize. Commissioner Glassman, which table was that?
If you look at the, the top.
Okay, table five.
Okay. So all of those levels of service are basically, I just want to make sure, are all going to stay the same and just go down it would be, if, at the worst?
Correct.
That's correct? And all, in all of those, in all of those directions, right?
Double checking, but that, that appears to be correct.
Okay, and then, and then, um, on the bottom, on a Saturday, the worst, the worst that this traffic study says is going to happen is BB, BB, AA, AA. Okay, look at the bottom line.
Yes, sir.
Rio, Rio Mar and North Birch.
Yes.
With, future without the project, BB, BB, AA, AA. Future with the project, same.
Correct.
Why does that stay the same?
Because the, it appears that the project does not have an impact on the level of service for that intersection.
So no change to the Rio Mar and North Birch?
Correct. And future without the project, as I think I may have stated, is you drop in the Beach Boys and Behe Mar projects, which.
Okay, that, okay.
That's what that column is to represent, the future, going forward in the future, including those.
Okay. So then quickly, Mayor, because I know you asked me to summarize this. The conclusion, as can be seen in the tables, the overall level of service for all the intersections during the peak hours for both the weekday and weekend are either A or B. And then, if you look at the, at the last page, the conclusion at the bottom of page 18, the proposed development will not generate over 1,000 daily trips. In addition, the project is expected to generate only 4.4% of the total daily volume in the AM peak hour and 5.3% of the total daily volume in the PM peak hour. Based on the analysis provided in the supplemental traffic impact study, the level of service for all the intersections during the peak time periods is acceptable and the proposed Bay Shore Hotel will not have a significant impact on the surrounding roadways. My question to you, Courtney, is what would be, what would cause a significant impact?
I may, I may be the wrong person to answer a question, because I assume there is a technical answer. I have normally heard our traffic engineer indicate that, you know, there is a level of service where roads hit a, hit, hit a level, like for example, a D where, you know, wait times, et cetera. But if you like, I know our traffic engineer is virtually with us and also Paul Weinberg at Keith, bless you, may be able to hand.
Well, I'd love to know that, Paul, because when it says that the level of service for all intersections during the peak time periods is acceptable and the proposed Bay Shore Hotel will not have a significant impact on the surrounding roadways. So what would it take on this site to have a significant impact on the surrounding roadways?
So, good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Thank you. Paul Weinberg with Keith. What is indicating is an unacceptable level of service would be pushing it all the way to level F. And as you see in this circumstance, we're not going anything beyond the AB of a change in intersection. So once the additional trips would be added and we can calculate what those trips would be, it would advance those level of service and degrade it down.
So that I understand, but, so what I'm trying to get at is what kind of project on this site would just skewer these numbers and create a significant impact to the levels of service on the roads, which are now A and B? What, what would it take on this site to do that? Obviously, you're saying this site, this project is not doing that.
Sure.
So what kind of?
Well, what difference, what difference does it make?
Because my, my, my point being is, and I'm going to get to this later, when we talk about zoning and we talk about code, I want to find out if something could actually go on this site that would still fit within code and zoning that would really affect the levels of service on the roadways.
But all we're really being asked to judge is whether this project is suitable or not. We, I mean, to speculate as to what could or should or would have is, you know, I don't think it's part of, it's instructive in terms of, in terms of whether or not this is a good project or bad project for the beach. I mean, I think we should just judge it on its merits and.
Okay.
You, you brought up the traffic study. It seems that it would just have a minimal impact. And I think we, that, we should just leave it at that.
Okay, I'm okay.
Okay.
The mayor has spoken.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor has spoken.
I'll remind you of that.
That's okay. You can remind me all day and all night. I do have some questions for Anthony, if that's okay?
Anthony Ferrardo?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anthony, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Excellent, thank you. So when I go through the, um, the prior reviews, when I go through adequacy and neighborhood compatibility and I go through everything that staff goes through, there's always a confusion in the public when we talk about setbacks and we talk about, you know, what setbacks need to be. And then we hear words like tower separation. And so I get asked this a lot. Well, when we're looking at setbacks, for instance, of anywhere between 20 to 40, I'm sorry, to 65 feet in terms of, I guess that was the rear setback, people sometimes have a hard time understanding the difference between that setback and then the separation between buildings. So, and also another question that always comes up is if, if half the height of a building is quote, "a required setback", why do we hardly ever see that applied to any buildings, especially on the beach? Buildings of significant impact, if you will. Can you just help clarify the difference between those tower separations, setbacks, half the height? Why that never really happens? And then why buildings don't follow that half the height? And are they doing it for any particular reason?
Well, I'm, I don't know that I can answer why you don't see half the height, because applicants do have the ability under the development of significant impact to request reductions from the baseline setback that's listed in the ordinance. And, you know, in, in terms of highest best use, I would guess that the applicants are trying to get the most bang for their buck and, and ensure that they are putting in a development that is feasible. But I would have to defer to somebody else on that. And that's just something that's been in the code. It's development of significant impact actually predates the 1997 revision to the ordinance. It was something that was left in and.
We should probably look at that at some point in time when we eventually look at all of our zoning.
We are. We're doing the Central Beach amendments and those actually went to planning and zoning last night.
Great.
And they were recommended for approval, so we're going to be moving them forward to you.
That's excellent. That's the one that we started like in 2016?
Yes.
Excellent. It's really coming. Wow, okay, great. Because I wanted to ask some more specific questions, but I think Courtney was going to maybe help make us understand in this particular project, the relationship between the setbacks, the tower separation, why you feel that your setbacks are what they are, which would basically range from 12 feet on the north to, um, I guess 47 feet, 2 inches on the south.
Certainly, Commissioner. Not quite sure why, how it ended up blank. Ah, there we go. Thank you, Commissioner Glassman. And if I may, while I know it's not in direct response to your, or not at all in response to your comment, I did want to add a piece of information about, prior to the mediation on January 2021, we did have a PowerPoint, excuse me, a Zoom meeting with Birchcrest condominium. I heard something to the contrary. The building was there. I think actually, Commissioner, it was at your request. With respect to the setbacks, my understanding and I believe I had heard explained by former planning director Greg Bruton to the, to a former commissioner, it was the whole idea behind half the height setbacks in a redevelopment area, because at the time of 89 and 97, the beach was deemed to be blighted. And knowing that one not, could not really propose vertical construction on most of the size of the properties, even if they're 400 by 200, you could never propose something that was a 175 feet or 240 feet and meet, beat half the height. My understanding from the former planning department was that that was done to ensure that development of significant impact requests would always put a project in front of the commission. Therefore, the commission, which was very focused on architecture. Okay. Anyway, that the development of significant impact was to have superior architecture. If you couldn't go above 50 feet and do a major hotel or a residence without having the, because the DSI then pulls in the design criteria. And as you indicated, Commissioner, the side and rear setbacks are the ones that have half the height. So it's our south setback and our east.
That's fine. Are you waiting for an image or?
Apparently I can see everything and I'm waiting where to.
No, we can't. We saw you, though.
I, I think another reason why that, that zoning law was put into effect was clearly to avoid buildings being built so close together that you, you, you ended up with walls of buildings to open space between buildings. I think that's, that's. So what happened was over time, commissions continue to waive the setback requirement of the one-half the height to accommodate a developer and in anticipation of better architecture, better street improvements, all the other things that, that are, that become part of a development project. So they overlooked this one-half the height concept. One example of one-half the height that was adhered to was La Reeve, which is on Bay Shore.
Okay, I apologize.
That was strictly one-half the height concept as it was wedding, wedding cake in design. But, um, but in this case, you know, we are looking to weigh between the setback, the setback request reduction versus the, the type of architecture and public realm improvements that are being made. And that's one of the questions we have to respond to.
Right. And also the tower separation, which is.
Correct.
Which is, can you go back to that other slide?
So this slide?
The one that you just had on, yes. The one in the red is the old one, right?
Correct, correct. And, and you're right, Mayor Trent Halls. I mean, in the half the height, it was half the height on these new projects down to a minimum of 10. I mean, that, that's an enormous range to put in front of every, any commissioner.
Right.
As a development of significant impact, we are required to meet the design criteria contained in the code. We are proposing tower separation from our neighbor to the south of 115 feet. Commissioner, you mentioned the beach master plan ongoing update. That, which passed the planning and zoning board, is going to recommend to you a 60-foot tower separation between each building. With respect to the setbacks, instead of seeking, we never started down the path of seeking a 10-foot rear or side setback. We have a 65-foot setback at the ground level and then greater as it goes from the property line. I'm not talking tower separation. So no, nowhere near any sort of the minimum. We believe that setback and the low level of the two, you know, the parking podium does meet the design criteria. With respect to the setback on the north. With respect to the setback on the north, in the ABA in most districts, setbacks are twenty feet, and then as a DSI, they don't start at half the height, the commission may reduce them down to zero, which you and former commissioners have done when you have wanted engagement, depending on the layout of the road and the surrounding areas. Given the, given the physical parameters of Bay Shore as it is right now, coming twelve feet at that portion on a road that is a hundred feet wide seems to provide the appropriate engagement, and again, that was done in, in furtherance of greatening the south setback. The setback on the east of the property is twenty-four feet to the podium, and I think you can see it best from this perspective, and then a hundred and sixty-eight feet for the tower. So while we are within the half the height, it is only for the height of the podium, the tower is well beyond half the height of the building at a hundred and sixty-eight feet. Okay, and did that answer some of what you wanted me to touch upon?
No, I, I appreciate that. And my last question, Mayor, Courtney, so there's been some discussion, and this is again, one of the issues that I had in terms of density and traffic and rolls into everything EMS, because to me, it's always about the number of units on a site and the density on a site. Tonight, we heard some people say, why are these all studio apartments? And I'm thinking, that's a great question. To me, it makes perfect sense to maybe not make them all studio apartments, to maybe combine some apartments, have some a little bit larger, have that kind of choice, which in essence then would bring down the number of units, which decreases the, the, the density. And then also, at the same time, I think, I think your podium and your parking garage are almost overly generous in terms of height. Forty-four feet for those two levels of parking, to me, is quite a bit. I don't know if you've given any consideration to, I mean, I think you could probably lower this building by ten feet and still have a very generous first floor right there, that you have on the screen, have a very, very generous podium, have a very generous two levels of parking, and still come down about, I guess, ten feet, and then at the same time, if you're combining some of these residential units into a bit larger, not only are you having an option in terms of selling, and I think it would be better to have that option, personally, but I also think that that would reduce the number of units, and again, as I said, reduce the density. Any thought about that?
Yes, we had given that some thought, and Pavel has looked at combining units, you know, obviously, one always wants to retain flexibility, that being said, given the studio size of them, as you've mentioned and Commissioner Sorenson had mentioned previously, we think that Pavel knows that he will, or is willing to, combine twenty of the units. It may end up being more than that, that would be future, but for, for right now, he's comfortable and it's the, he has penthouse units, if you will, on the east, that twenty of them could be combined, and that would be, reduce the total number of residential units in the building to, from one fifteen to a hundred and five.
Okay.
And then with respect to the overly generous design of the podium in the building, knowing that having expansive glass on the ground floor is a priority, Ronaldo does believe that the, with, and with respect to the podium, the podium, there's a little extra room, it's only two floors of parking behind that perforated design, the second floor is a little taller. He is able to reduce the height of the second floor of that podium by two feet and believes he can reduce the height of the ground floor, which is twenty feet right now to seventeen, and still have a comfortable experience as a pedestrian. Further, so that would be five feet, also in looking at the level of the interior amenities at the pool deck level, we're able to adjust that by two feet, so in answer to your question on height, I think right now, the main roof slab on the building you're seeing, and I apologize, the architectural feature is still on there, it is not in the current plan, is at a hundred and seventy-four feet, and we could, we want to make sure this functions and functions well, we, we know today we could reduce it to a hundred and sixty-seven.
That's what.
Courtney.
Sorry?
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, can we make a motion to extend?
You said he was finishing up, so.
I, that's my last question.
Okay.
Well, we're still going to need for the other stuff, right? I want to extend it for an hour?
Yes, I, I move that we extend it an hour.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
As I go to the restroom.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the meeting is now extended to eleven o'clock. So I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no problem, so I just want to make sure that I have this written down right, so we think we could reduce the number of units from one fifteen to one oh five by combining some and making it larger.
Correct, correct.
Especially on the east penthouse units. And also probably bring the building down from one seventy-four to one sixty-seven.
Well, the, the problem with that is that, that first floor height is really important, I think, to, to, to get away from, you know, the idea of feeling, you know, I guess seventeen feet, twenty feet, I mean, it's three feet, but, I mean, don't you like the idea of there, if, if you're going to vote for this building, wouldn't the open space and the expansiveness of the experience coming off the street be preferable than a sort of a cramped feeling when you walk in the front door?
I, I agree, but I, I don't think seventeen feet is cramped, I mean, I think that's a pretty good height, I'm fine with twenty, it's, I'm just exploring options. I understand exactly what you're saying, but, so what do you think about making some of the units a little bit larger to actually for sale and also to reduce the number of units and the density? If you go down ten and combine all those ones that you see right there facing east, remember, this, this building is all the way west on the podium.
If you combine units and make them more than just.
Studios.
More than just studios, I think that would certainly go a long way towards reducing the, the trips as well as the, the density.
And also, I think, I, I personally think in this market, it's just a, a good idea. That's just my opinion. Anyway, okay, I'm, 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 I'm fine, Mayor.
Combination?
Huh?
I think combining units is a good idea.
I think so, too.
We, we will do, we will do that.
Is that complete your questioning?
I'm good, yes, all I think.
Vice Mayor, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
You have none, okay. Commissioner McKenzie? Okay, Commissioner Sorenson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, just a few more. Let's see, Chris, who's our, who's the best traffic expert on our team here?
Let's start with the Director of Transportation and Mobility, we'll start with Ben, but it's probably him and, and people on his team.
Okay, great.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner Ben Rogers, Director of Transportation and Mobility.
Oh, yeah, good evening, Ben, and I could get Courtney's feedback, too, on this, but I want to get yours, the, have you, have you taken a look at the traffic study?
Yeah, yeah, I've been, yes, we've been reviewing. Benjamin Restrepo, as Courtney alluded to, is no longer with the city.
Yep.
Primary reviewer, but I am familiar with the documents.
Okay, great, does it, tell me about, if I was looking at it right on the screen, it was 2019, I think October 2019, if I'm, is that?
When we met, June.
The, no, sorry, the, the traffic.
Twenty twenty.
Analysis. That, do I have that date right?
Yes, October, right.
Go ahead, yeah.
Commissioner, the traffic impact statement that was before you in June nineteen was from 2019.
Yep.
Traffic's impact, sorry, the traffic study, the full study, was done in January 2020.
Gee, okay.
It was done in January 2020, but it covered traffic in October.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
So.
In October of 2019.
Published in January, but it, but it covered traffic in the previous October.
Gotcha, okay, okay, perfect, no, that's, that's, does that, Ben, does a traffic study that was analyzing traffic two years ago, does that matter? Is that too long of a time?
I don't believe so, I believe it aligns with some of our other practices.
Okay, so it accounts for sufficient just general population.
Yeah, there's seasonality and future growth built into the, the model.
Okay, so that's okay, and what, and, and maybe this is more, thank you, Ben, I think that's maybe the only question I have for you, the, so Courtney, what didn't we have in the backup? Just help me understand that from a traffic standpoint.
Assuming that your backup is what's online, and Commissioner, I don't know what you get in your backup.
Okay.
We submitted to this.
With the public, I guess what.
Oh, with the public app was a, I think it's a two-page executive summary of the traffic that was published online, and again, my experience is, is done on projects for size of traffic studies, because they're two hundred pages with Excel charts.
Okay, so they got, so the public got, just, Jeff, maybe you correct, so the public got a two-page summary of the traffic study, is that what, or Chris?
They got the originally submitted traffic statement.
Okay, they got the traffic statement.
Correct.
No, 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 I.
I don't, I don't.
Exhibit eight, exhibit eight is an executive summary dated September 2021, and it's an executive summary.
It's titled here, Hotel Traffic Statement.
Dated 2021. Exhibit eight, it was a two-page executive summary, that was in the backup, that was published.
I guess I can turn to Ben, is that what we refer to as a traffic statement? That's what it's labeled as.
So I believe what's, what's attached is the executive summary from the study.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, so the public got the summary, we're calling, is that what, what are we calling that, summary?
Yes.
They got a summary, the public didn't get the full traffic analysis, am I using the right terms, or?
Correct, the full traffic study, that, that, the tables that Commissioner Glassman asked me to share were used during the mediation, but the public for today, it looks like, just had the, the two-page summary.
Okay, so does that matter? I guess, and maybe this is to Alan or Chris, does not having the full traffic study matter legally in a quasi judicial?
In the quasi judicial, you, you are obviously the trier of facts, the only thing that you consider is competent substantial evidence. What's in the backup for the public, that's for public, that's a completely different process, due process is owed to the parties, which is the city and the apple. But to the extent that, whether it's attached or not, you've heard testimony tonight from Keith and from others with regards to that study, so that you can consider, you can consider what you've seen and what's been presented to you, that's competent substantial evidence, the fact that it's not in the agenda backup is irrelevant to the quasi judicial process itself, because you are the only parties, the city and the apple.
It doesn't matter if one of us did not receive that documentation while others did?
You don't have to consider it if you don't think you've seen it in inadequate fashion, so again, that's your determination, you're the trier of fact, you're the judges, so whether you feel it's sufficiently viewed by you or considered by you, again, you had some presentations of it this evening.
Yep.
So you can consider that if you want to, but you, you, you're, you're limited to what evidence has been presented here today, whether you think that's sufficient or not, that's up to you all.
Okay, all right.
If I may, Ian DeMello, Law Firm, Shu and Bass, on behalf of the applicant, I just want to remind you as well, that what's before you is actually is a proposed settlement that's authorized by the floor of legislature under Fluadra, so this is very similar to any other decision you have to settle litigation and to avoid litigation. Essentially, we use the quasi judicial process, but what it is, it's, it's, it's your, using your authority, your proprietary legislative authority to approve a settlement.
Okay, great.
That being said, though, you, you don't divorce the fact that it's quasi judicial, because if they want their project to be approved, it has to go through that quasi judicial process, which it went through before but was denied, so you do have to keep those two components.
We agree, we're using it in the quasi judicial process.
Yeah, okay.
And just to confirm, because I know this sometimes applies to site plans, the complete site plan proposed changes with the full traffic study with all the tables, which is hundreds of pages long, was all submitted to the study, the city, I think, back in April or May.
Yep.
I know sometimes what's published online, including site plans for size, don't have all pages, I'm not speaking to this case today, but I do want to verify that everything was submitted to the city.
Yeah.
And Commissioner, one caveat to that, as well as to the extent that a traffic study is not required, that's not a requirement that they have, so to the extent that they've gone ahead and produced that for your edification and to answer some questions previously through the settlement process, that's fine, but if it's not required in the quasi judicial sense, because it's not a requirement of the ULDR for their particular project, then the fact that it may not be before you would not be something you, if they're not, if they're not required to have it, then it's not something that you can consider for denial.
Yep, it's not something we can consider, say it again?
For example, if they're, if, if you say, well, I'm not approving this because there's no traffic study, if they're not required to have a, a traffic study, that would be an improper basis to deny.
Yep, okay. Okay, great, um, let me see, talk to me about, and I, I wasn't quite tracking this, when there was discussion about additional uses, let me understand that, what?
So my understanding, Commissioner, is that the, the IT manual has obviously different use types, and.
Right.
When this first came before us, Benjamin Restrepo, our engineer, wanted to make sure that we weren't teetering the threshold of needing a traffic study compared to just the statement, and so the resort hotel definition includes restaurant space.
Right.
What he asked them to do was separate out the restaurant into a different use type just to see if the restaurant pulled away from the road, resort hotel definition would exceed the thousand trip threshold, and that output did not exceed that threshold.
Right, yep.
So then when they resubmitted this time, they included the restaurant inside of the resort hotel use type.
Yes, got it.
And did not pull that out separate, and that's why there's a reduction in trips from, I think, nine seventy-five to eight twenty-seven.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Great, now, now I'm tracking, yep, perfect, okay, that makes sense, thank you. Then, I guess, last piece for Alan, again, give us just a, a summary again of sitting here today, we can approve this or deny this based on what?
Well, obviously, they, they have to check off all the right boxes from a stand, and you look to staff for that to determine that, from a ULDR standpoint, they've met the requirements. There's a few requests with regards to setbacks that are made, and that's why it's before you, actually, putting aside the settlement aspect of it, it's a site plan level four because of the special asset they have, and that's why it's before you. So you do look at that criteria under the ULDR as you would if this was the first time it came to you. The fact that it's a settlement, yes, you're settling litigation at the same time based on previous actions, but you really should focus on the technical aspects that are required under the ULDR, because again, this is being presented to you in a quasi judicial fashion, so if you are going to approve the project, it's got to go through that normal process that we typically go to for development application, so that's what you should focus on. The fact that it's a settlement, obviously, is part of the process under the, the Fluadra, which obviously has impacts on the litigation and everything else, but I would focus on the quasi judicial aspect based on the technical requirements of the ULDR, which your staff has reviewed and has indicated that it meets the criteria.
Are there subjective qualities of the ULDR that can be considered for this?
I don't think I understand the question.
So when you mention technical components of the ULDR, I'm assuming by technical, you're meaning certain height and so forth that are qualitative.
Right, would you rely on your staff?
Setbacks.
Right, would you rely on your professional staff to review and provide your recommendations?
Exactly, well, see, that's where I would say neighborhood compatibility to me is more subjective.
It, it, well, it is, but again, you're, you, you, you start off, and again, it's up to you all.
Yep.
Follow your staff recommendations, but as Mr. Ferrardo stated earlier, there are a variety of components when it comes to neighborhood compatibility, he can probably run through those for you, but there are different adequacy requirements in that regard, so, yes, it is subjective.
There's both objective and subjective components to the ULDR evaluation.
I mean, it, it's subjective, but there's still a measure by which you want to, you're still following a certain measure, and again, Mr. Ferrardo maybe can speak on it a little bit more, but neighborhood compatible, ballot, neighborhood compatibility isn't necessarily this amorphous concept that is a catch-all, there's still some criteria that you need to follow and some standards that you want to follow, even in making that determination.
And do we, when we approve or don't approve, do, as my understanding. And do we, when we approve or don't approve, do, as my understanding, what, do, do reasons and rationale have to be given by the commissioner, how does that?
You are required by Florida law to, to the extent, well, yes, in the quasi judicial sense, if you're denying the development order through this process, you, you do want to state, you have to have a basis for it, because again, if we do proceed to court as, as a denial, you, we go back to the normal standards, which is competent substantial evidence and, you know, the essential requirements of the law. So state statute does require you to state and to be able to articulate in whatever order comes from today that would be a basis for your denial, because at that point, you know, again, we're going to go back to court, deal with the previous record, it is part of the settlement process, but it, it would behoove you to have an articulable basis for denial, if you are going to deny.
Okay, all right. Thank you, I think that's all I've got.
Any further questions? Any further questions? None, okay. Okay, so I have a few things I just want to go over. I think when we first saw this project, we were, I don't think we were fully apprised of a lot of the different objective criteria, traffic being one of them. And now that we're looking at this executive summary, it seems that there's going to be, based on what Keith has, has provided to us, eight hundred and twenty-seven net new daily trips, not peak hour, but those are daily trips. So they're looking at peak hour of thirty-six, forty-four, and fifty-one on Saturday. Number of cars or trips that would be added to the roadways during any given hour. Let's say we doubled that, if we're talking, if there's any discrepancy as to the amount of restaurant space or, or however the calculations are being made, so we'd, we'd be looking at maybe seventy or eighty new trips per, per, per hour during those peak times. And based on my understanding of a traffic study, that still would not significantly impact the area based on the roadways that, that this intersects, Bay Shore Drive is a wide road, as is, as is Birch Road. So I'm not sure that traffic is, had really been an issue, even though I thought it was an issue when we first voted on this. But, and according to the traffic summary, the executive summary that we're given, they, they're, they're telling us that it's not a big deal. I am concerned about emergency response times, though, that, that are impacted by traffic. But I am, I feel at least better in knowing that just a few blocks away, we will have a fire station. So, which is an unusual situation for any neighborhood to have a fire station so close to where a person lives. I'm not sure if that seven minutes is, or six minutes and fifty-three seconds accurately reflects the, the amount of time that it would take to get from that particular station to this building. Something tells me they could, they could get there much more quickly, but again, we'll use that as the standard. And since that's below the, that's below the city's standard, from what you're saying, Commissioner Glassman, that's actually better than what we have, what we see in other parts of the city. Someone brought up the, the idea of the public realm, and the fact that the city continues to not have sufficient resources in order to really complete the project necessary to build better streets, to, to do landscaping. And yes, we have always relied on new development to assume the responsibility that really is the city's responsibility. Yeah, a lot of these streets are nasty. They've been neglected for decades, and the areas that are really attractive have been taken over by private development. They've added wider sidewalks, they've added landscaping, the pathways from one end of the, of that barrier island to another, leading to the beach. The nicer pathways are always been developed by private interests. So unfortunately, that has been the pattern, and I'm not sure there's much future as far as expecting the city to go in there and start spending a lot of money. The only place I know we are spending money is if the, the federal government decides to build, to pass that bill on infrastructure, I think five million dollars is slated for Breakers Avenue, but that's it. Neither Bay Shore nor Breakers or any of the other side streets is there, is money being intended for their redevelopment. So we talk about the historic nature of these buildings. I've passed by these buildings quite a few times. You know, I really, it, it is a real shame that you went and spent all this money making them look so, so nice that you have. And now the idea of tearing them down, you know, breaks everyone's heart, because like, isn't there any place else you could have found to build this hotel? That you have to tear these very nice buildings down to, you know, shame on you for being so nice to us. You've been, you've invested so much in our community already, and now, you know, it's, it just, it kind of really hurts to think that, you know, you're ready, you're going to take this away. But anyway, most importantly, as far as the city's perspective, is the infrastructure. And I'd like to hear from our, from our city staff, what is the status of our infrastructure in and around this area based on the improvements that are, that are proposed by the developer? And how they interconnect with our existing water and sewer network underground? Is there someone from city staff that can respond to that and give me a comfort level in knowing whether or not the additional impact of this development is going to be able to be absorbed by the infrastructure that we have in place or that is proposed?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner Allen Dodd, Director for Public Works. So we looked at it from a water and wastewater perspective. The water distribution is absolutely fine. The wastewater pipes do need to be upgraded around this area, and the developer did agree to do those improvements, which, which was discussed earlier. As far as the pump station, right now it has a operating time of only three point two-nine hours per day. Our standard is ten, so it's way below. When this comes online and with other development, we'll only have a four point seven-seven hour pump station operating time. So still less than half of the capacity of the station there. So from an infrastructure perspective, there really are no major concerns.
So we have capacity at the, at the sewage plant to, to accommodate the increased sewage that would be developed from this project?
Yes, it, it's adding point zero three eight-six million gallons per day, and we are still below our maximum capacity of forty-eight million gallons per day with this additional requirement.
Okay, so, so in listening tonight to, thank you, Alan, I appreciate that.
Mayor, could I ask Alan while he's here, so let him get up? So Alan, if you could also just discuss this project in relationship to what we're starting now with D thirty-one pump station that the La Solas Marina is going to be doing, and then all of the rest of, and not just capacity, but also condition. Because I remember, I think if I was reading the planning and zoning minutes right, and that was a while ago, that we're also talking about replacing a lot of the infrastructure in and around this site. The developer's replacing a lot of the infrastructure, I can't remember the exact amount, but, and I don't feel like looking for it right now. But can you talk to me about that in terms of the conjunction, in conjunction with the project that's happening from the marina? Which is just to the south?
Yep, right, the pump station, I can't remember the, the number off the top.
I think it's D thirty-one?
Well, this, this one is D thirty-one, but at the, the pump station capacity within that area, there is several projects to increase, and we, we don't have a concern as far as the D thirty-one project here, this one is a little older than other pump stations, but has more than enough capacity, it has three pumps within the station itself. The one that is going to the marina will increase the capacity overall of the system in this part of the city.
Okay, so you feel confident that we'll be okay with not just capacity, but also condition in and around this site and surrounding the site?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so, so let's talk about neighborhood compatibility. This has always been a very subjective subject that is supposed to be based on objective criteria. So figure that one out.
Yep.
Dealing with neighborhood criteria, neighborhood compatibility for the longest time, you know, we have to look to see, you know, what's in the area. Well, clearly, this is not the, this is a mid-rise project that's going to actually be lower in, in size and, and density than its, than both its neighbors. Certainly the, certainly the W to the north and, and the building to the south. So I believe it is shorter than the building to the south, correct? Same, how, how high is it?
Mayor, I believe the building to the south, while we didn't have a survey, is about a hundred and fifty-six feet. This is one hundred and seventy-four to the main roof.
Hundred and seventy-four, okay, all right.
And the W is two hundred and twenty-something.
Yeah. So, so in looking at, and then of course, Spring Tide is probably a little shorter, right? Okay, and that faces the ocean. So in terms of neighborhood compatibility, I have to be honest with you, I mean, it clearly is compatible with what we've allowed to be built there over the last twenty-five years. So, you know, that horse has been let out of the barn a long time ago. So I can't, I don't think the argument that it's not compatible with the neighborhood is, is really going to hold much water since we've, this, this, this commission, previous commissions have, have approved, you know, the redevelopment of this section of the beach between A one A and, and Birch Road, allowing for hotel development right up and down, right up and down the beach. So, I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out why I don't want this, and I'm not going into personalities or, you know, or, you know, who's good, who's a good person, who's a bad person. I have to look at the building, I have to look at, you know, you know, I have to look at what we're adding to the, to the beachscape environment. And, you know, it's, it's really hard for me to say that this is not going to be something that's going to be a positive, because in the end, after it's built, we're going to appreciate what it has brought to the public realm. So, so anyway, I have nothing further to say, and does anyone else have anything?
Mayor, I actually would, because I've been spending so much time talking to so many people in the district about this project, so.
Right ahead. Hey, could you explain something to me also? The vote of the Central Beach Alliance, two oh two to twenty-eight, now, that's, that's weighted voting, would you talk to us a little bit about?
I'll be happy to, and I'm going to be brutally honest with that vote, because I, I watched that vote.
Be brutally honest?
I'm going to be brutally honest. First of all, the Central Beach Alliance has a system by which a building gets ten votes and a, an individual member gets one vote. So people can come and vote on behalf of a building and get ten votes, and obviously, that's very weighted because of that. According to when I did ask questions of the Central Beach Alliance Secretary, again, being brutally honest, there were a lot of people that signed up to join the CBA just in time to vote on this project. And you can imagine where most of those people, again, being brutally honest, came from. People that had not been members, and that's why those numbers are really as skewed as they are. And that's just my honest assessment of that, that did not influence me when I voted not to support this project in two thousand and nineteen, but that is the reality of that vote.
So, so tell us, I mean, it sounds, I mean, you're the district commissioner, tell us, you know, where's your heart lie now in this project?
Okay, I'll be very happy to. And, and first, I want to just let everybody know how much I appreciate everyone who came and spoke tonight. I understand, I understand the emotion, I understand the passion, I understand the frustration. Mayor, you mentioned the historic aspect of the corner. I want to remind everyone that actually, there was a historic designation application on this site that was denied by the Historic Preservation Board, but it came to this commission. Mayor, you and I voted to support the historic designation on this site, but we were outvoted three to two, so that did not happen. And that's okay, you win some, you lose some, but I was very passionate about that. In fact, I'm going to tell you that when I served on the Broward County Historical Commission, I actually nominated, and we did get the Judge Clayton Nance Award from the Broward County Historical Commission for this property. And I remember delivering the plaque for this to the property, okay? So I, I feel very strongly about that component, and I want people to understand that, yes, it is, as Abby said, as you said, it's heartbreaking to see what's happening on that site. But this project and the path that I've taken, the road that I've taken on this, reminds me so much, and I want people to understand. On the beach, we had a project once to, Ireland's Inn wanted to be converted into a, originally, a condo and a hotel. Two buildings, which involved the demolition of a historic property. That was a huge fight at city commission, I don't know if you remember, huge fight. Yes, you were, I fought tooth and nail to have the Ireland's Inn designated historic. And we lost, and that's okay, you win some, you lose some. But in that fight, what happened was a site plan came forward that, at the time I was president of the Central Beach Alliance, we hated the site plan that came forward. Two ugly boxes, one a condo, one a hotel. And we said to the developer, no, and a huge podium, no underground parking. It was really, it caused an uproar in that part of the beach. So we, we fought that, and we worked with the developer to, to get a project that we felt at the end would be much, much better. And that project changed drastically. So those of us that first fought, even the notion of demolishing the building, ended up still working with the developer, because you cannot always get what you want. And you have to sometimes, you know, roll up your sleeves, go to work, and get a better project. Is everybody happy with the Albarish project? I'm sure there are people at the Palms or people at the White Agret that are not happy with that, because it did take away their views. But I, I want to explain to people at Spring Tide and Birch Crest that views are not in our code. So when I'm faced with something like this, and especially now because we are in litigation, and this is actually part of a Fluadra process, and I want to remind you that the magistrate, after the Fluadra process, said in his report that he encouraged both parties to make the hearing portion of the special magistrate proceedings moot and to consider this proposed resolution. In other words, he's selling to, he's saying to us, look, folks, don't even take it to the next step of a hearing, because it looks like I'm really happy with the progress that the applicant has made in moving this forward. So we have to consider that, we have to consider the taxpayer dollars, we have to consider the litigation, we have to consider the continuing court case of this project. And again, I want to go back to the residents and the immediate buildings and say, look, please understand that we have to follow the law. If we don't follow the law, we're just going to spend a lot of money and end up losing, and then we're in trouble. Because everything we do has to be based on zoning and code, not emotion, not I don't want dirt around my building, not I don't want construction noise, none of that is in our code. None of that is in our ULDR, our Unified Land Development Regulation. And as a body sitting here in a quasi judicial situation, we have to follow the law. Do I always like it? No, I don't. Do I wish that some zoning was different? Yes, I complain all the time. We went through this issue with another project up, up a little bit further north on the beach, where a hotel will be built because it fits within the box. But when I look at this project, I, I, I say, like you did, Mayor, you know, you'd love to find a reason to say no, but it, it really isn't. When I, when I first voted not to support this project in two thousand and nineteen, it was because I didn't have data, I didn't have a traffic study, I didn't have EMS response times. I didn't even have complete information on infrastructure. And when I went back and read, and I want you to know that I have spent hours on this in the last couple of weeks, when I went back and read the full transcript of the meeting, not even just the minutes, because I wanted to read every word, I wanted to get every nuance of why I voted no the first time. And I kept coming back to the fact that all of my objections were met. They were all met by the changes that I see now in front of me. I will tell, I'm sorry, the people from the Spring Tide left, I know they're very upset, but I would say if you put back that photo of the podium in the building, most developers, most developers, if they had this site, would take that tower and move it as far east as possible on this site. And not only would it block every view of Birch Crest to the south, but it would loom over Spring Tide, again, I'm sorry they left, but it would loom over that building, and totally, they're worried now about some of the western view. Well, I got news for you, they would have this tower hanging right over them, and there'd be nothing anyone could do, because they would be fitting within the setbacks. So, you have to consider all of these things that the developer has done, um, that typically developers don't have to do, or would not have to do. Do you have that picture, the one that you had up there for a long time with the, with the, uh, with the tower and the podium? Anyway, I'll keep going, not that one. The one, the really nice visual of the first floor, it was whatever. Uh, anyway, there you go, thank you. That tower right now sits on the, as far northwest on this podium that you can get. Any other developer would have moved that right all the way east and hung right over where those two ladies are walking, and it would have been right there, and everybody's views, everybody's quality of life would have been obliterated. But that's not happening here. So, again, I appreciate all of the changes, because again, all four or five of my objections have been met. This is a very stark corner, and I agree with those that have said, "Too much concrete, too much asphalt, backout parking, the public realm is going to be tremendously improved." My hope is that when we do get those federal dollars and do Breakers Avenue, people will look around and say, "We need to do this with Birch and Bay Shore now." So, we need to either do a special taxing district, or the city needs to step up, or a combination of both, because what we're going to do on Breakers needs to keep going and deal with Birch and with Bay Shore. Because i- it's only the next step, and it really needs to be that North Beach Village is a village. Mayor, I remember you used to have charrettes like in two thousand and three, talking about North Beach Village, and how it needed to be a seaside village, and we're still talking about it. But again, we're getting there only when the developers do their work. You know, there are only a few trips left on the Barrier Island. That means that there are going to be just a few projects left, and then we're done. Nothing else can be approved, because we're out of trips, and I doubt that the county is going to give us more. So, you also have to think about, okay, we don't have that many projects that are going to be able to come to the Barrier Island, so where do you want to use those trips? Right now, this project is in an area where we just saw the levels of service of the roadways are A and B, one C. Think about if we don't do this, and we save those trips, and then someone comes down the road and wants to do a project on some of those pinch points closer to La Solas, or anywhere else where we have failing intersections. Well, that's not going to be, you know, that's not going to be good for anyone. So, you know, I don't want to belabor the point. Again, I know that there are people that are upset, I understand why you're upset, but I have to follow the code, I have to follow the law, I have to follow our UDR, ULDR, I have to follow our zoning, and I have to also consider the taxpayer. If we did turn this down again and go forward with litigation, another hearing, end up in court, who knows? What, what do we rest our case on, uh, if we go down that path? What, what is our objection that will hold up in court without blowing hundreds of thousands of legal dollars, uh, on this? So, again, uh, I wish I could see another reason, because I know that, uh, there are people that are upset, but I'm trying just to explain what it is from my vantage point of what we have to do. So, thank you, Mayor, for giving me the time.
All right, thank you. So, um, Courtney-
I just had a couple of questions, too, before-
And I was going to give Courtney the, the wrap-up sheet.
Before she wraps up, I got you. Courtney, I found where the restaurant square foot, maybe you've already found this, the square footage is listed at four thousand eight hundred fifty-five. I'm looking at, and this may be like a old, I'm looking at exhibit two, let's see, what am I looking at? Two B, I think? Two B, page twenty? I think that's where folks are getting that number, just-
Courtney, you're not on.
I guess I don't control that?
Yeah, there you go.
Um, Commissioner Sorenson, I think on the same page, I'm not sure if we're looking at the same document, does hers look like this?
Yes, I think so, yeah.
Okay, Ronaldo, so that, that was gross square footage calculations, uh, over on the, uh, purple line?
Yep.
Uh, retail gift shop at twenty-five fifty-eight, Restaurant Lounge Juice Bar thirty-six-hundred.
Yep.
Um, so, I'd have to have the architect explain, but the thirty-six-hundred, and again, it was always a hundred and fifty-seven seats. Um, if you looked at the site plan before and act, after, it's exactly the same geometry.
Okay.
It is thirty-six-hundred square feet, Commissioner.
Okay, perfect. All right, thank you, that helps. And Alan, are we, the, the legal costs, are we incurring legal costs on this?
We do have, uh, outside counsel retained as well, yeah, we do.
Okay.
So, we've, we've, we do have somebody already retained. We haven't done a whole lot, because the petitions haven't been filed and the responses, but going forward, there, there will be costs, yes.
Costs, okay. Um, so just, Mayor, I just want to share some thoughts I have. I, I think it's heading in a really good direction, I think, the project. I think, um, that really good, some compromises and good, good, uh, work has really happened. And I think there's a little bit more. Um, I'd, I'd, I'd love to see a little bit more engagement with the neighborhood, a little bit more, I think the Central Beach Alliance kind of weighing in again, I think would be helpful, again, given the new updates and working together, um, but I, I think we're heading in a good direction.
Okay. Ms. Crush, do you want to, uh-
Especially around neighborhood compatibility. Thanks.
Okay, do you want to, is there, are there any concluding remarks you would like to make, or are you, are you, are you finished?
Finished, Mayor.
Finished, okay. All right, so, would someone like to make, do, are we closed public hearings, so now it's just a matter of voting, it's one way or the other? So, uh, does anyone want to make a motion?
Mayor, I would like to, but I also want to make sure that all of the conditions of approval from planning and zoning are still incorporated at this level, and one of the reasons I wanted to mention that is, to our point earlier about, um, capacity and, uh, also condition. Uh, if you look at condition of approval number four, that was from the Planning and Zoning Board, um, it basically says that our, uh, Public Works Department dated September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, actually, this is after planning and zoning, the capacity and availability letter indicates that the existing eight-inch and ten-inch gravity sewer mains along North Birch Road currently do not have capacity to serve the project and convey flow downstream to the existing fifteen-inch sewer on North Birch Road and Pump Station D-31. Applicants shall be required to meet the conditions of approval included in the September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one Water and Wastewater Capacity Letter, uh, which states, "One, upsizing the eight-inch gravity sewer on Bay Shore Drive to a ten-inch pipe approximately two hundred and fifty feet in length. Two, upsizing the existing ten-inch gravity sewer main along North Birch Road to a fifteen-inch sewer pipe approximately seventeen hundred feet in length. And lastly, applicants shall enter into memorandum of agreement with the city to coordinate the design requirements and construction of these improvements." So, I just want to make sure that all of those conditions, there are a-
I think people should understand, though, that the developer is not putting the pipe in the ground, we are. So, are we committed to allowing them to pay for it? What would be the process? Will this be completed? Will this be completed before they get their CO?
It would have to be as a condition.
So, before we get their, before we give them their CO, these, uh, improvements Commissioner Glassman just spoke of would have to be completed as well?
I, I read it as condition four, so yes, yes.
Yes. And Mayor, there are nineteen conditions, so I'm not going through all of them, but I just want to make sure they're all part of whatever we do this evening.
Okay. Anything further?
I'm good.
Someone, Commissioner Glassman, do you want to make a motion?
Um, so, is this, because we're, this is a fluidious settlement, what exactly is the motion?
You just, you're introducing the resolution.
Excuse me, you're introducing the resolution?
I'm introducing the resolution, not a motion.
Modified site plan as opposed-
A resolution to-
Introduce.
Approve, or there's another resolution to reject.
We do.
You do.
Exhibit, exhibit nine is resolution approving, and exhibit ten is resolution denying. So, which do you, which are you introducing?
Resolution approving.
Okay. Please call the rule.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving and accepting a modified site plan as a settlement in a Florida Land Use and Environmental Dispute Resolution Act process, approving the issuance of a site plan Level Four Beach Development Permit for the development of a seventeen-story mixed-use hotel, residential, restaurant, and retail project, and parking facilities located at three zero one six and three zero three zero Bay Shore Drive, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the A-1A Beach Front Area Zoning District, authorizing the city manager and city attorney to take necessary actions to effectuate this resolution, and providing for rescission of conflicting resolution provisions, severability, and an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
No.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes. And the resolution's approved. Thank you, everyone who appeared tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner.
PH one, public hearing to evaluate all comments received and adoption of a resolution authorizing the submittal of a grant application to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program in the amount of nine hundred and six thousand dollars. Someone like to, uh, others, anyone, no one has signed up to speak? Do I need to move to close public hearing?
It is a public hearing, so why don't we, in an abundance of caution?
Do I hear moved, do I hear motion to close?
Moved, second.
Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas? Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Uh, would someone like to move the item?
Second.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, supporting and authorizing the submittal of an application to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for grant funding in the amount of nine hundred, s- nine hundred and six thousand five hundred ten dollars through the Community Redevelopment Block Grant Coronavirus Program. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trantellus?
Yes, and that item is approved. PH two, public hearing, final assessment resolution for underground utility line facilities in the La Solas Isles. I'm so sorry that I kept you, Tom. I know your baby's waiting for you at home. Uh, a number of people-
And your daughter, Tom. And your daughter.
A number of people signed up to speak. Is anyone here against it? I mean, you are, you are against it. What you're, I can't- Okay, Bill, come on up and speak. Bill, followed by Tom Goddard, followed by David Maya, followed by Brooke Nagus, Nagusi, followed by Neil Kalis. Sorry to keep you waiting here tonight, Mr. Hari.
So, this one, right? Uh, that's the one, keep it on the slide. And where's the page down? Are we ready?
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. My name is Bill Howery, I own four twelve and four sixteen Bon Tana Avenue, I've lived there since nineteen ninety-three. I'm a member of the La Solas Isles Homeless Owners Association, uh, former vice president, I'm listed as the director for Bon Tana Avenue. We voted on the undergrounding in May of two thousand and nineteen, there was an update meeting with Commissioner Glassman, city manager Lager Blum, and city engineer Frazelli on November sixth, two thousand and nineteen. I cannot recall any further discussion, uh, since that point. I was very surprised that the association did not reach out to the members to take their membership temperature on this new assessment, especially since the new assessment is so much greater than what we voted on. Four one two and four sixteen are on the east side of the street, approximately halfway down the block. Four twelve is on the left, four sixteen is on the right. I voted in favor of the undergrounding in May of two thousand and nineteen, twice, once for four twelve and once for four sixteen. I voted in favor of the undergrounding based on a cover letter of an estimate of eight fifty per year. The estimate of eight fifty per year was repeated in the ballot. The proposed assessment of two thousand and twenty per year is more than twice the estimate, it's not what we voted for. There has some, been some discussion that the real number may be fifteen hundred per year. Will the authorization for the assessment be reduced to fifteen hundred? Fifteen hundred is still seventy-six more than the, per year than what we voted for. If you add twenty percent for cost and twenty percent for financing, then the number is only eleven ninety. This is five thirty-four Bon Tana at the end of the east side of the street. This is five twenty-nine Bon Tana at the end of the west side of the street. My one hundred-foot lot, uh, of four twelve and four sixteen will be assessed, four thousand forty dollars per year for a total of one hundred and nine thousand dollars. You can see that four, five thirty-four and five twenty-nine and the New River are approaching four times bigger. They will be assessed at two thousand and twenty per year, notwithstanding a far greater footprint, much greater usage, and much further distance from the source. In closing, the proposed assessment amount is not what was voted on, the methodology is flawed, and the process is unfair. At a minimum, the association members should vote on the correct amounts. Please vote no, and thank you for your time. Please add the PowerPoint to the record. Thank you again.
Thank you, Bill. Tom Goddard, followed by, um, David Maya, followed by, uh, Brooke Nagusi.
I'm Tom Goddard, I'm vice president of the association, I've been running the undergrounding. Unfortunately, you know, there have been a lot of missteps over a period of time, and we've been able now to, to, to step in and fi- fix it with the help of a number of people in this room. We've tried to keep everybody happy the best we could, we, in good faith, first of all, this is not an association. We have three hundred and twelve homes in, in, uh, from Mola to Isle of Palms. Some people are not members of our association, so it's not a question of the association, because I, we, we had to vote as homeowners in that, in that group of homes. Uh, we got an overwhelming, you know, and we were supposed to get, uh, a majority, eighty, ninety percent, eighty, uh, seventy-five percent of those who voted. Well, I said, "That's not enough." If I got fifty votes, you know, out of three hundred and twelve homes, then I would, you know, it's kind of skewed. So, I went door to door in a hundred-degree heat, and I talked to all the residents to get them to understand what we're doing here. Our home values have increased probably, you know, my home value in the past two years has probably increased a million dollars, right? And I don't have one of the bigger homes in the area. So, when we're quibbling about, you know, uh, an increase of, let's say, twelve hundred dollars a year, uh, you know, it's miniscule to what this will, and this is before we do undergrounding, we put all utilities underground, and it is, includes hookup, and includes paving of the roads, new lighting, we're, this will be, and, and you can take this formula and drop it into every neighborhood in Fort Lauderdale. Unfortunately, we've been the guinea pigs, you've had to get the process right, and, you know, you've had your counsel here to advise you of where the missteps were, and you fixed them. Let's get this passed, let's move this thing forward. You know, we have too much time and effort in, into this, we can be under construction in December. Thank you.
Thank you. David? Followed by Brooke? Followed by Neil?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to echo, uh, Tom's, uh, perspective, that this is not an HOA, uh, project. This is a project that involves every home in the neighborhood, uh, consisting of about three hundred and twelve homes. Everybody voted individually. The, uh, overwhelming result of that vote was to support the project. I have, uh, via email, sent out, uh, updates as to the cost and progress on the project. Whoever didn't get it, I simply don't have your email, or I may have an incorrect email. I do believe that the cost is not going to come in at two thousand, uh, per lot per year, I think it'll be closer to the fifteen- fifteen hundred. To me, it's a no-brainer. For those of us who live in the area, if you're there for the full twenty-seven years, uh, you will more than recoup what you have put in, uh, from the increase in the value of your property. Right now, my cable goes out at least once a week. Uh, I have a generator, because I don't believe that if water level would rise in a hurricane, I'd have any power for months. Uh, so I think it's a slam dunk, and I think the vast majority of people who reside in the Isles, uh, would agree that this is a no-brainer for everybody.
Okay, great, thank you. You're president of the association.
President of the association.
Okay. Uh, Brooke, are you still here? Okay, I'll take your word for it. Neil, Neil took a nap, and then he showed up. Just say yes or no, Neil.
You know, at my advanced age, Mayor, every hour is meaningful. I've been here since six o'clock. The only redeeming value of coming tonight is that I wasn't home jockeying between CNN and Fox News. This was much better. Um, my wife and I decided to move from Weston in two thousand thirteen. A very well-planned community with excellent infrastructure. And when we looked at where we wanted to move, we decided that we wanted to move to east Fort Lauderdale. But one of the things we noticed where we were looking was that infrastructure wasn't as good as what we enjoyed in Weston. We even noticed that on the north side of Las Olas, the utilities were undergrounded, but on the south side they weren't. And when I spoke to people in the neighborhood, because we tend to do that in Realtors, we learned that the Las Olas Homeowners Association had been working for a number of years at a plan to underground the utilities. That encouraged us to go forward with our purchase. It's now been eight years since then. You are working on a model project with us to underground not only the electric, but also the cable, the telephone, and I think there's also, uh, fiber optics going in. The system's going to have redundancy to it. Um, we've experienced a number of outages, and there is visual blight. There are many reasons to do this and show the rest of the community and the area that we can lead the way, and that you as our leaders can do that with us. Vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Okay. Um, would someone like to move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentellus?
Yes, public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Uh, introduce, but I'd, I would need some clarification. We have to just explain to folks that I've been writing and questioning, because I think that, that, first of all, I think the twenty twenty, and Susan can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the twenty twenty figure was done conservatively, just so people wouldn't say, oh, you said it was only twenty twenty. I think it's going to probably come in lower, maybe fifteen or sixteen, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and also, the original dollar amount that was, uh, conveyed to the residents years ago, I think that did not include the cost of financing. So now, you know, we had some blips, as Tom said. There were some problems with processes and when we went to financing and all of that, but that's all been worked out. But, um, I believe that that's the reasons why the dollar amount is stated now and why it was lower originally. Correct me if I'm wrong.
So you've introduced the resolution?
I didn't. She just gave me the thumbs up, so I guess I did it right.
Okay, so please call the roll.
Thank you, Susan.
A resolution to the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, relating to the provision of the underground utility line facilities in the Las Olas Isles neighborhood, imposing underground utility line assessments against assessed property located in the Las Olas Isles neighborhood in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving the assessment role, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentellus?
Yes. Let's get it done.
Do it.
Get it done. Get it done.
You're welcome. Okay, PH, uh, PH three, resolution granting a waiver of limitations at four thirty-five Bayshore Drive, apartment four oh two, um, slip number six for the installation of a one-four-post, uh, boat lift. Um, I see the applicant has signed up to speak and, um, and, uh, Rochelle Coatsy at four twenty-five Bayshore Drive. Are you still here?
Yes, you are. You're here for four against it. You're against it? Please come up.
Yeah.
Back again at the podium. Hello, guys. Okay, I just want to give you a little bit of history. I live at the Surf Club, which is adjacent to the Adagio.
Can you speak into the mic?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you better.
Okay. Um, I live at, uh, the Surf Club, which is, uh, on the south side of the Adagio. So I'm going to give you a little bit of history. In May twenty seventeen, Surf Club and Bayshore Towers worked together with the Adagio developers for a better solution for public safety, recreational use, and environmental impact when it came to building out the docks, the setbacks, and everything like that. What was agreed then in twenty seventeen was increase the setbacks for the north and south docks by five additional feet from north and south property line, decrease the length of the outermost docks, which is one and six, and no boat lifts. All key parties, including experts from the Adagio, uh, team, which included environmental experts and all those kind of, um, experts, uh, marine experts, agreed, um, again and again for the public safety. A few years ago, um, Surf Club graciously approved a boat lift for, uh, slip five as a good neighbor. That's, that's all we were doing, just as a good neighbor. It was in the middle, it wasn't on the, on the end. And, uh, and they assured us at the time, Adagio, that no variances or changes would be made after that. Then on October the twenty-first of this year, Stephen Farrell and, uh, of slip number, number six, asked and approved, and got approved, as I imagine, for a boat lift, again, much to the dismay of the original twenty seventeen agreement. However, we resignedly accepted this, and that's where we were. But now, he is asking to extend the dock from twenty-five to forty feet on the extreme south side, which Adagio's experts at the time said it was not, um, environmentally safe to do that, so.
Move to extend the meeting.
Right now, I need to hear a motion.
Move to extend the meeting.
Motion to extend the meeting another thirty minutes.
Till we finish.
Second.
Second. Please call the roll. You got thirty seconds.
Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentellus?
Yes. So, um, Rochelle, so I'm looking at the, I'm looking at this building, and you're talking about safety and all this other stuff. I'm not, I mean, it's a huge, wide canal there. It's the intercoastal. What is the issue here? Can, can you come back up here? I had to, I had to cut you off, uh, because your two minutes was up, but also I had to get the meeting extended. But I, I, tell me, what, what is the problem?
So, so the real, eh, well, the issue is, um, Adagio has two floors of, of, uh, garages, and then it's their-
They're the apart.
So what they're looking at is a lovely boat. We are below their garages. Well, on the same level as their, their ga- garages. And so when we're looking at the water on the side views like this, we're having a boat stick out. Now, it's not only views, it's the impact of the water under, as the boats are going past and things like that. I don't know, that's, um-
So you live to the, you live to the south of this building?
Yes, to the south of the building, which is Surf Club.
But the thing is that when this building was approved, um-
They, they, when the building was approved in twenty seventeen, um, the, the agreement was the setbacks for the north and south docks by five additional feet from where it was originally planned, and there would be no boat lifts, um, and, and a decreased length of the outermost docks.
Well, so is, is this violating that agreement? Because so far, all they're asking for is an extra fifteen feet out into the water.
They're asking for an extra, uh-
For a lift.
Uh, yeah, uh, from twenty-five to forty.
Right. So, but is, i- is the lo- you're saying that, that there was a certain s- s- uh, location where they would not have a boat slip? Is this that location?
That's that location. Well, there's no, the location, the, the, um, the, the, he's on the six, um, the one on the south, there's the end one. So his location is the closest to the border of Surf Club.
So he's, he's, his location is okay. You're just-
His location is okay. He's, we just don't want to stick out so far.
So it's another fifteen feet is what you're objecting to?
Pardon?
The other, the extra fifteen feet is what you're objecting to.
Yes, is what I'm objecting to.
But the building is still respecting the agreement, not to put a-
Absolutely, yeah. It's the fifteen feet we're objecting to.
Okay. All right. Um, Mr. Farrell, are you on the line?
No, he's right here.
Oh, there you go.
But are you on the line?
I like that.
You get two minutes, because I'm, because we're tired. Thank you.
Get some help, yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, good, thanks. Um, so I appreciate your time. I'll, I'll do my best to present the case quickly. Um, I'm a local. I live and work in Fort Lauderdale. Um, it's very rough in front of the property. It's important for the environment and for, for protection of the boat. There was a boat that sank at Adagio, um, that was not on a lift. Um, but there's some, been some confusion around this application that I'd like to clear up. First of all, I'm not trying to expand what's been approved. So I have a slip that is twelve feet by forty feet. That's exactly the, I'm putting it within the footprint. I just want to put a boat lift. I'm not trying to extend further into the waterway. All I'm trying to do is get the boat out of the water, within the, the four corners of what's already approved. There've been several other boat, boat lift variances approved historically. Um, when, uh, if we can look at this picture here, I've tried to show the view here. Um, this is my boat lift in six. Five is the one where the lift has already been approved. This line that I've drawn here in, in quasi-pink shows, um, a perspective of someone at the Surf Club, standing on their corner of the lot, looking out towards the lift that I've proposed. Um, all of the area to the right, they're going to be looking at a boat with a boat lift, because that boat lift five has already been approved, and it's already done. I mean, it's not installed yet, but it, it's been approved. I'm in slip six, and so all that my slip here with the boat lift will impact is this tiny little corner right here, because their view's already cut off by this slip boat five, which is fifty percent bigger. That's a fifteen by fifty-foot slip. And so my setbacks have already been established to secure their views. I'm not extending my, my boat further into the coastal by even a foot. I'm just trying to get my boat up safely out of the water.
Okay.
I appreciate you letting me go past time.
Okay, no problem. Any, anyone have any questions or comments? Someone like to move to close public hearing?
Moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas? Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentellus?
Yes, public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce a resolution?
Introduce.
Introduce to do what? To approve it?
Yes.
Okay.
A resolution to the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida pursuant to section forty-seven dash nineteen point three E of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations granting a waiver of the limitations of ULDR section forty-seven dash nineteen point three C and D to permit Stephen C. Farrell installation of one twenty-four thousand pound four-post boat lift extending a maximum distance of plus minus forty feet from the water side property line into the inter, intra-coastal waterway, such property being located at four thirty-five Bayshore Drive, unit number four oh two, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, three 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 oh four, and more particularly described below, subject to certain terms and conditions, repealing any and all parts of resolutions in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentellus?
Yes, and the resolution's approved. Uh, PH four, public hearing approving the issuance of a certificate of public necessity, Care One Transportation LLC to operate one-four transit passenger transport van within the city of Fort Lauderdale. No one has signed up to speak. Any questions? None? Would someone like to, um, is that a resolution or a motion?
It's a motion.
It's a motion. Someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trent- Vice Mayor Moritas? Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentellus?
Yes. PH five, public hearing approving the issuance of a certificate of public convenience and necessity for all exquisite limo and transport LLC to operate two Chrysler limousines and three Mercedes-Benz Sprinter passenger vans within the city of Fort Lauderdale. No one has signed up to speak. Does anyone have any questions? There being none, would someone like to move the item?
Moved. Second.
They're moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner McKenzie? Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentellus?
Yes, and PH five's approved. OSR one, ordinance to second reading, uh, listen, ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified, uh, Land Development Regulations, sections forty-seven dash two point two, measurements to redefine the term grade. Uh, no one has signed up to speak. Anyone have any questions? No questions? Um, please call the roll. Oh, someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, could I just interject for a quick second? Um, there is an item on page two of the commission agenda, uh, commission memo, and we made a change between first and second reading so that we could clarify that the fence itself would not be taller than six feet. So the change basically says that the fence itself wouldn't be, it, we wanted to make sure that it could not be reinterpreted that you would get a nine-foot fence. So we made it so that the fence would be at the same level as the finished floor of the principal building. So I just wanted to call that out and make sure that you're aware of it, and that, that, ask if that could be part of the motion.
Okay, so, so to repeat, you're, when you measure the height of a fence?
I can read it into the, into the record.
Just read it so that we all understand what we're voting for.
So what it said on first reading was, "When used to measure non-habitable accessory structures, grade shall be the finished ground surface of all, at the base of the accessory structure being measured. If a retaining wall elevates the non-habitable accessory structure, grade shall be the finished ground surface at the base of the retaining wall." What it says now is, "When used to measure non-habitable accessory structures, grade shall be the finished floor elevation of the principal structure."
Okay. Everyone understand that? Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Nine feet, right?
Introduced.
An ordinance to the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending section forty-seven dash two point two entitled measurements of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations to change the definition of the term grade, providing for conflicts and repeal, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas? Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentellus?
Yes, and the ordinance is now approved on second reading as amended and interpreted by, um, Ardo. Um, is there any further business of the commission?
We have the walk on. We have the walk on.
All right.
A resolution.
And you want to, uh, can you recite the resolution?
Someone want to introduce?
Well, please.
It's a, it's a-
Let's hear what it is.
It's a resolution appointing, uh, Robert J. Biggie, uh, Junior of the law firm of the Biggie and Rodriguez for a special counsel bankruptcy proceedings regarding riverfront crews and anticipation yacht charters.
Okay. Someone like to introduce that resolution?
Introduced.
Introduce.
A resolution to the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing Robert J.
Biggie.
Biggie Junior of the law firm of Biggie and Rodriguez, PA, as special coun- Biggie, Jr. of the law firm of Biggie and Rodriguez, PA, as special counsel to represent the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida in connection with bankruptcy proceedings filed by Riverfront Cruise and Anticipation Yacht Charters, LLC, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner McKenzie.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorensen.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moritas.
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales.
Yes, and the resolution's approved. Do you have any closed-door sessions you want to...